Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work session for Monday, February 26. I have a motion to open the meeting. Second, all in favor? The first item up is affordable housing. Yeah.
But it's. I know I was waiting from Dan and. Like answer anything great presentation was gonna cover some of the stuff that I had that I have more of my questions. So I didn't.
Sure. So so I can just kind of get into it. I think what transpired was you had some questions about increasing the inclusionary zoning requirement. Reach more, you know, lower income levels or increase percentage of units in private development that would be required to be affordable. And then you had questions about considering accessory building units. So I pulled out and dusted off an old report that was prepared by the assistant, former assistant planner in 2019. At Silva, we give him credit for for the work he put into this and we updated it with the planning department intern and myself. In light of took those two questions and, you know, the ongoing community conversation related to affordable housing. So I was prudent to put together kind of a review of the history, the current circumstances, as well as policy lovers that the board has to use or not use. So we can start with this presentation if Dan is ready. Help me move move the slide forward.
Say one.
So this is kind of just a headline. Statistic. So in 2019, Westchester County did a study of housing. They came to this number, $270,000 is the minimum income to afford a median price, single family home in the village. We ran that same analysis, slightly different because we didn't have all of the inputs that we had based on the sales of single family homes in 2023. And we found that you would need an income of $374,000 to afford a median price home in the village. The median price is also shifted up, obviously, to about 1.08 million. What is affordable housing? By U.S. Department of Housing and redevelopment, they find it as housing that should be obtained by spending no more than 30% of gross annual household income on housing facilities. Different types of affordable housing, low income housing tax credit development. These these are part of federal funds that flow through New York State. And they are used to develop housing that's affordable at a range from 30 to 120 AMI with an average of 60 AMI, which is a requirement of those housing tax credits, public housing. There is no public housing in the Village of Monnik. And within the United States, you cannot create any net new public housing pursuant to the Fair Thought Amendment of 1999. If municipalities wanted to, they could add public housing still because there's been a reduction in public housing through various other HUD programs. Where they take out public housing and replace it with low income housing, tax credit housing and kind of private, public, private partnership housing. Section eight vouchers. That was kind of the tool that was used to to replace public housing. They offer basically, if you get a voucher, if you're able to secure a voucher, which is very difficult to do because the wait lists are extremely long. And you have to buy each individual housing authority. I think the last time the town of Amerenik opened up their housing voucher listing, I thought that was an application. So they, what what they do essentially is they will allow you to go into the private market and they'll pay the difference so that you're only paying 30% of your income. Inclusionary zoning units, 10% in the Village of Monnik is set aside. These units are at 80% AMI. I can, I'll get into what AMI means, what the income bands are. And then lastly, there's going to put naturally occurring affordable housing. This is housing that's regulated but is affordable to the tenants living in it. Based on 30%. Some historical review of zoning and housing segregation. Zoning was first adopted in the 90s. Zoning explicitly had racial zoning bans in a lot of early zoning ordinances. That became unconstitutional in 1917. It was quickly replaced with kind of class based, but thinly veiled racial segregation through Euclidean zoning where apartment buildings and and the types of buildings that would be affordable to those of different ethnic classes or racial classes were not permitted in certain areas. Also, minimum lot size requirements like acre, half acre or larger were only affordable to those who were a part of a certain economic class, which aligned closely with a racial or ethnic class. There was also, you know, from 1926 until early 1968, restricted covenants as part of subdivisions. We think about fixes like Levitt Town where they would not allow black families to to live or, you know, even Jewish families to buy a house in those communities. Those were banned in in the 1950s, but weren't, it wasn't really enforced until 1968 under the ban. We also know that during this time, the federal government had an active part in creating these patterns of segregation through the way in which they loaned both at the Federal Housing Authority and the Homeowner's Loan Corporation. The Homeowner's Loan Corporation is known for kind of the idea of redlining, so you can see neighborhoods were assessed based on the ethnic and racial composition of those neighborhoods and given a rating, you know, one through four in terms of creditworthiness and lending. So in areas that were predominantly, you know, areas that were predominantly minority, there was less investment in these areas. And I kind of has essentially been persistent to this day. If you look at homeowners loan corporation maps and like dot density maps of racial opposition, those patterns are still around today. Historical access to housing in the village. So more than 80% of the villagers' housing units were built before 1970, which was prior to the 1980s. Housing and really the production of housing and the wage and the wages that workers were earning were matched. Supply and demand were matched at the time. Even though they were matched and people could afford to live in their houses, the distribution, as noted from this previous slide, was not equitable due to implicit and explicit racial policies in lending and development practices. And then I'm going to kind of shift gears to regional factors that are contributing to affordability issues today. Job growth versus housing production, job growth in the region has doubled housing production, which is not really the rate that you want to see. The ratio is a little bit off. Housing units. This one over housing units provided regionally and then rising destruction costs are kind of the inputs. The HUD settlement with Westchester, I didn't want to talk about this a little bit. There has been a lot of discussion about the village needing their quota with respect to affordable housing. I'm not sure where that that concept comes from. I'm not aware of any quota. What I do know is that when HUD sued Westchester County, the Village of Monnik was not implicated, not because of the percentage of affordable housing, but because of the demographic makeup of the village.
Yes, question. So so going back to what you just said, in terms of the reason why we weren't implicated was because of the oh, I'm sorry. The reason why we weren't implicated is because of the demographic that was that it was that we had at the time. And can, do you know the statistics of the individual, like the demographic of the community back then?
I think it was if you had less than 7% Hispanic or less than like 4% Black, then you would be implicated.
And right now, because it it doesn't matter based upon Hispanic and Black or even, I don't know if they include Asian in that as well. But Hispanic and Black, is it together or is it separate? Like you have to be like a certain amount of Black or a certain amount of Hispanic or just together?
I, it was, it was, they were separate. The percentages were were separate. And then and then they had different requirements. So like under the initial proposal, like if your thresholds were even lower than their threshold, it would be things you you were supposed to build like equivalent amount of housing in your, in your. So the less you had of those demographic profiles, the more units you were supposed to be required to do. Those unit requirements never came to fruition because of the settlement at the end of the day. So like the lawsuit wanted one thing, the settlement reached another thing, which was 750 units, county wide, it didn't align, kind of.
Do you know offhand what our demographics for those populations are right now?
I will get to it.
Thank you.
They're there in the press. So as part of the settlement, Westchester County agreed to put in their discretionary funding policy a requirement that municipal recipients of certain county funds are subject to a ban on local residency requirements and preferences and other selection preferences that do not permanently further fair housing for all housing developed. And so that's where we get the kind of local preference question that has come up. So that that's the language that is in their policy. So whatever Bob is looking into, I'm sure he'll talk to that at some point.
Yeah, I mean, the the short version is every, most intermunicipal agreements that are proffered to the village would provide grant funding to us from the county typically have that language.
Yeah.
So does that basically mean that if we were to fund it ourselves, we couldn't, anytime we accept any additional funding, we cannot? Or does it not matter, even if we were to fund it out of, say, tax dollars? I'm not suggesting we are, just asking a question. Would that eliminate the, you know, the the burden or the requirement?
So you're still subject to the requirement that whatever you do, affirmatively further fair housing, that's a fair housing act required. And it doesn't mean, I say this with a degree of caution, that doesn't mean that preferences are impossible. What the, and I've written this to you as a proposal comparison, but if you ask me, so I'll let out the the case law and ultimately the settlements, because most of these cases result in settlements have led to the conclusion that you can have a preference if you can show that that preference affirmatively furthers fair housing. So you'd have to do a study. As part of your studies, you'd have to establish that. And you'd have to construct the preference in a way that affirmatively furthers fair housing. Now, that's not going to be possible. Right? A local preference in a lily white community is not going to be possible, never going to be able to do that. But it may be possible to craft such a thing in a somewhat diverse group. That's a question that would have to be studied. So I I can't say it's impossible, but it's difficult.
So those requirements are mostly based on racial guidelines. What about on age?
Age? Well, you could have, the Fair Housing Act allows for age restricted developments. But they have to be really age restricted.
Like the one on Cross Street from the train station. That's age restricted, you have to be a certain age then.
But it would still be the lottery and everything else would be the same. It would just be, you have to be over a certain age, like 55.
How you craft it. And it would be just age restricted unless you did further study, right? Couldn't be. Age restricted and village preference, village resident preference, unless you did the AMP of age study to show that that would not, that would still furtherably further fair housing.
And isn't the seniors, is is the senior a lottery system?
I actually don't have the answer to that.
I think, I think it is. It's not just romantic resonance, but it's, it is a lottery.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I could reach out to the owner. If you can build a wall there.
Okay. Thank you.
This is really small on your screen, but just just a note on the comprehensive plan. There were two primary recommendations within the plan related to affordable housing. One was to increase the supply of low and moderate housing in the village. That was a little bit, that was a little bit more prescriptive than the other recommendation, but it's essentially to take a look at the county model ordinance and to try and make the village a little bit more aligned with that. And to lower the AMIs from 80 to 60. And and that's something that we're doing right now. And I'll talk to towards the end of this. And then the second recommendation was to develop affordable housing on village property where affordable and specifically talked about considering the expansion of the CQ zoning district. It applies to the downtown to village of properties highlighted on Figure 92, which includes this property and the Hunter Park. So those are within the comprehensive plan. So who qualifies for affordable housing in Westchester County? These are the income guidelines. If you look at the 80% band, is a range from one person, 82,250 to let's say a four person, which would be 172,450. That's the 80% AMI band, area immediate income band. Ranges from 61,700 for one person to 88,100 for four persons. And then going down to the bottom of the band, just for the interest of time. 30% AMI would be one person, $3,850. And four person household, $4,050. Translating that to.
I'm sorry, what AMI was that?
That was 30% AMI. Translating that to monthly housing costs. One person household that starts bottom to go up, one person household that 30% AMI would be $771 a month. Four person household would be $1,100 a month. And then at the top range, 80% AMI, it would be 2,000, one person household, $2,056 a month up to a four person household, $2,936 a month. Now, going to some of the local data, we already kind of talked about this, the year construction, we can, we can skip over this. This is a chart showing the growth in rent since 1990 and the growth in median household income at the village level. So what we see is 15% growth in wages and a 90% increase in the cost of rent. This is adjusted for inflation. So this is not a good statistic. Rents are costing a lot more people's budget than they should be. And they certainly don't need the affordable, what affordable housing, 30% income. Rent burden, this goes through at the local level, the rent burden from 1990. It's never really been that good, but it's definitely gotten worse. 2017 was, we had over 50% of the village renters were rent burdened.
91?
It was like 52% in 2017.
What, 2017?
And the latest data set that we have, 2022, it's just shy of 50%. So 47%. Home burden, this is if you own your home, also not not great numbers. The 2012 numbers, I think, reflect perhaps not great lending standards leading up to the 2007 housing crisis that we're still lingering about a little bit. Because we had 26% of homeowners paying more than half of their income towards their taxation taxes.
Half, you said?
Yeah. So anything that's the the yellow bar on top, that's the percentage of of homeowners that are paying more than 50% of their incomes towards their homes. The lower bid is paying 30 to 50% of their income. And when you combine the two of them, that's the total amount of people paying over 30% of their income. I'm sorry if your eyes are glazing over because of how I'm explaining this, but housing policy, housing data is not maybe not the most riveting stuff to reveal. So, yeah, let's keep going. This is the regulated affordable housing inventory in Monnik from 1986 to 2022. There was a lot of production in around 2000, you know, 1998 to 2002 or 2000 or so, there's a lot of regulators for housing that came online. Those have, they had a 20-year timeframe of affordability and they have since fallen off. So now we're really just down to the few inclusionary units that are at 80% AMI, which again are many a rent from 2,000 to almost $3,000 a month. Am I? And there's probably about 10 of those, maybe. And the rest are American towers, that big band in the middle, American towers, senior housing. And then the bottom band is the Washingtonville Housing Alliance, which is down to 10 regulated units. They have other units, but they are not subject to regulation. My understanding is they still offer them at a lower rent than market rate commands, but they're not required to do that.
Interesting.
So there's been a big drop off. This is just showing kind of the same thing in a different, in a different way. 1990s, lots of production. Since then, really nothing and a lot of drop off. Not nothing, but not a lot. This is showing the diversity relative to the New York metropolitan statistical area. The village is certainly less diverse than the metro area. In a lot of that. And if you want me to go through each one, I'm happy to do so. The New York metro area, I race white, it's 46.5, the American village, 63.4, black or African American. Area 16.1, 4.3% in the American village. 0.8 of American Indian or Alaskan Native in metro area, 1% in the village. 12.5 Asian Americans in this metro area, 4.9 in the village. I'll skip over to say there are two, so, sorry, some other race, 14.1 in the metro area, 13.9 in the village, plus two or more races, 10% in the New York metro, 12.5 in the village, and then Hispanic or Latino. We have 25.2 in the New York metro region and 27.5 in the village. And not Hispanic, Latino, 74.8. These are pretty comparable at this point. And then white, not Hispanic is 43% of the metro region and 50% of the metro. And then I'll go into kind of some of the policy options that that the board has. There's really two ways to do this, assuming that public housing is no longer an option that this country does anymore. So it's either providing below market rate housing or reducing the price of market rate. The options to do either of those things are on the providing below market rate housing, it's inclusionary zoning. It's using publicly owned sites for affordable housing, it's direct subsidy. And then on the reducing the price of market rate housing, it's relaxing density regulations to allow the market to better match the buying band. It's when you're doing that, thinking about how to do that in a smart way, that's smart growth, that's thinking about if you're going to add density, making sure that it's in areas that have supportive infrastructure, that have public transit, so that there's less reliance on cars. I think nobody thinks that the car is going to suddenly disappear, especially in Westchester County. It's how many car trips are you taking? Does three cars, can they get tied with one? And then kind of soft touch density increases like ADUs where you'll, if you allow them, you may see, you know, one to 10, you know, a year. And then you slowly will increase the housing. I don't know if that's going to be enough to meet the demand. But from the communities in Westchester that have adopted ADUs, you really don't see that many being made. That could be a result of the economics. It could also probably more likely be a result of the fact that there's really not many financing options for ADUs. There are out less and there might be more companies moving here to start to start doing that kind of financing, but we don't really see it here. This, these are just some examples of ADUs. These are taken from RPA, the Regional Finance Association. Detached residents, attached residents, you could have detached in the back where you're converting, you know, garage that was in the rear yard and kind of a neo-traditional neighborhood. Or a traditional neighborhood, I shouldn't say that, you know. You could have them on top of a garage doing addition, that kind of thing. It's really up to policymakers to decide A, if they want to have them and B, how they want to regulate them. You know, do you want to allow them in basements? Do you not? Do you want to allow them in a flood zone? Do you not? Are they already in a flood zone and there's no safety regulations for those that are already existing as illegal housing? Do you offer a path to legalizing and creating some safety and code standards? Those are all policy decisions that the board will have to wrestle with or not, and just choose to not not address it at all, which we'll get to that too. In the next slide, that is the do nothing alternative. In the short term, housing demand will likely continue to increase and rents will continue to uppace inflation. Year term, regionally, low and middle aged workers will likely be pushed out of the community. Long term, local businesses will be unable to fill jobs, which will impact local services and the economy. This is more at a market price level, but it will affect locally five each of those. And we've kind of already seen that to an extent. There has been a lot of difficulty in finding workers for low and middle age jobs in the region. Then I'll give you the formal analysis. This is really to answer the question about what you should do or at least what will happen if you make decisions changing the inclusionary bonus. So what we did was we took what a developer uses to figure out if the site makes sense to to develop and to see if they can secure financing and if they're going to make any money on redeveloping site. So we did this for two different zones in the village. We did the C1 TOD zone and downtown CQ zone. We did the C one TOD zone and downtown C two zone, so C one TOD, that's the Maranic Avenue. Um basically from the train bridge up to Nostrand Avenue. Um and then the downtown is from Barbara Allen Park on American Avenue up to the train station, it's all said. Um up until the bridge that crosses to to Rynek uh as well as Mount Pleasant, parts of Mount Pleasant. And uh whatever. So what did we find? So we found that. The current requirement, ten percent of units at eighty percent AMI in the downtown C two district is. Three, you can do it, you can make it work. We found that. If you increased it to twenty percent of units. You might be able to get financing, but most likely you won't. But if you see there's a range nine to twelve, we said at twelve percent, it becomes viable. Um so the F A R thresholds are equal to, they kind of follow the same range. So at two point zero eight F A R, you can make it work, you could, you could probably get financing. And increase the requirement to twenty percent of units, the um affordable adding eighty percent AMI range. That range is again from eighty two K to one hundred and seventy two, one hundred and seventy thousand. Um sixty percent in the C two, um the current requirement works ten percent. So you could, you could consider lowering the requirement to sixty percent in the downtown. And it wouldn't break the, the way it works according to the, to the pro forma we did, obviously, we made some assumptions. I'm just, I don't want to say, like, this is the universal law of economics in the village. Um but we think we did a good job, um at twenty percent, at sixty percent AMI. Um it would be pretty much impossible to get financing. Uh moving forward, in the, we call it postmortem TOD, because it was, it was reduced from one point two to point eight F A R. Um nothing is feasible under the current requirements or lowering the requirement. And then. Um again, I mean even less likely to get something done, and this kind of makes sense because. Since those zoning changes, there hasn't been any development there, and that's because it doesn't make sense to develop.
You're saying, got it, and if I'm understanding this correctly, you're, you're essentially saying that if we. We couldn't increase go from ten to twenty, but we could, you keep ten and make it a sixty percent percent AMI, in the downtown area, okay?
Well, elsewhere, even you could do it elsewhere too, it's just not feasible anyway, it's just going to be something that's on paper, so you lower the requirement, but it's not gonna. It's not going to produce any affordable housing.
But we could, we could make that change in the downtown area and. That would, that is something that is actually feasible for a developer or anybody that.
Based on what we, the, the work we've done. Uh and then. Uh so basically increasing the percentage of BMR. And oh, and I should know, actually, can we go back, can we go back for a second? I did want to note that. The lowest rent that um a developer can charge in the C two. Um to get the, the return that you're talking about, of having ten percent and sixty percent AMI was. For the market rating, it's forty one hundred a month for a two bedroom and thirty seven fifty for a one bedroom. So by doing that, just be aware that you're increasing the market rate to subsidize the unrent. And if you wanted to, and and if it went to twenty percent at sixty percent, we did this just to see the numbers, just to kind of play with them a little bit. Um you would, a developer would need to charge forty four hundred for a two bedroom and four thousand for a one bedroom. Ultra luxury.
Yeah.
It's in the downtown.
God, and that's at the twenty percent of those.
Yeah, and that's if they see the market for ultra luxury units in downtown. You know, we see them in in Marchmont, there are arguments demanding that and even higher prices as part of multifamily. Just, I'm just saying, when you change it, the, the, the thing about inclusionary zoning is it's. It's basically making the developer subsidize, so it's making everything more expensive for everybody else.
Got it, so it's just changing, it's just changing the market.
Yeah. Um sorry, go back to the.
Craig, so it's not really the developer who's subsidizing, it's the other renters in the building.
Correct. In your tone, they have to do that, by your policy, there's only. Um and interestingly, there have been studies um that looked at that effect and whether it impacts. Housing affordability at a regional market level. And in some places, um notably in Boston, they found that it did actually have an effect. It was um essentially functioning like a tax. Of housing and reducing its production, thereby increasing the cost of housing in the Boston region. Um so, you know, it has to be tailored correctly in order for it to work and. And I think we see that like in TOD zone, every municipality was changing their zoning to do what the village did in TOD zone. Um then everybody's saying no more development, because you would have to provide this amount of. Of uh affordable. They're not being built, and then that means that supply is constrained, while job demand continues to grow. And therefore there's a mismatch between. And it causes rents to go up, housing is not as elastic as other goods, you know? Obviously. And that's, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, back to last slide, actually. I think I had a question. When you talk about density, can you just, he's going to that little.
Uh yeah, so as the models demonstrate, the more you increase density, the more likely something will pencil out. Um so. If you wanted to say. Get like a. A higher percentage, and you've done this in your bonuses a, a little bit. Uh although they don't, they don't actually, they wouldn't work for private development, so for example, you have a. In the TOD, you have an up to one point two F A R for fifty percent of units being affordable. Um that wouldn't make sense, we looked at that in our pro formas, actually, we should. But a nonprofit developer who's getting low on the housing tax credits could make that work. But, but essentially, if you want to get a higher percentage. You have to provide more density so that the return can still be made. Uh if you want to keep densities low, then you can't have a higher requirement because it's just a different product. Unless that's the, the goal of the board, and in which case, housing costs are just going to keep going up. And, yeah. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, one, one thing, the um uh what's your guess on the, on the breakpoint? Um you said like ten might be. Low enough, but at some point on our way to twenty, we, we begin to discourage the development. I mean, is, is that a notable number?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we can, we can, yeah, we can plug it in, it's.
It depends on the AMI, because as you move with the AMI.
That number's gonna shift as well, correct?
Yeah, so you said ten percent at eighty percent, or are you saying?
Ten at sixty.
Ten at sixty, oh, how much higher?
Yeah, yeah, it's sixty. Cause eight, cause eighties, eighties high, I mean, eighties not uh not really affordable.
Um well, it is affordable to the people. You know, and, and, and what we, and what we've, what we've found actually is. New construction is demanding rents that are unaffordable up to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. When we did this report in twenty nineteen, we never released it, but new construction rents were matching one hundred and twenty percent AMI. That's not the case anymore.
Yeah.
The cost of materials, the cost of land, everything has gone up, so much so that. A middle class person can't afford to rent here in a new building, they can find older, older buildings, absolutely. If you could find, if you find a, a unit, uh the vacancy rate is essentially zero. Um it has been since I've done these studies. Um no, no unit stays on the market for more than one or two months, um so.
It reminds me of New York City in the um, in the uh early eighties, when I, when I moved to the city, it was like, uh. You essentially had to wait for somebody to. To clear out and you had to know somebody, yeah, yeah.
Maybe, I don't, I'm sure there are lots of different circumstances.
In your presentation, I didn't see anything or possibly didn't hear anything, and if you said, I apologize, about the diff, the other type of. Housing options were like condos and, and um. Condos and co-ops in our community, and how affordable is that for people?
We have that in the report, they are, I just wanted, they are definitely more affordable. That being said, the co-op boards, they have their own like kind of review criteria for people, and they may require a higher down. I don't know every co-op board's requirements.
No, and, and, and.
But they are definitely a lot more affordable and.
From what I, from what I've heard, that um, you know, going through co-op boards is not as easy. Um for some, it could be, it could be easy for others, but it's not always easy for every person. And um. Do you find this, I'm not saying that this is for the village of Maranic at all, but just in your. You need something?
I think that's the, the town of Mariner.
Yeah, the town of Mariner.
Seven forty uh West Boston Postville.
You're welcome. Um that. In some, in some shape, shape or form, could it be discriminatory? Have you seen that those practices are discriminatory within the um like co-op boards or under board?
I, I don't know any specific examples.
Okay.
Well, um and the only, I think, co-op or condominium, though, that the, the units in Larchmont on the uh.
No, there's units in the village. There's units in the village, you have um Palmer, Palmer Terrace over there, that, I believe that's, I don't know if that's co, condos or co-ops. Then you also have um, that's co-op, and then you have uh Richville Road on a certain section, because it, there is a divide line that is part of the village. Um and then you have, um there's, there's, there's a few, that's quite a few. But then, but then you saying that it's affordable, um I don't know about based upon whose income, because when you, when you include. The um, you include the, the, I guess what we consider the mortgage. And then the um, the fee, the um, the maintenance fee, that, that maintenance fee sometimes is more than the actual mortgage.
Yes, and you know, I don't know.
So I don't know how affordable that can be.
Um but we found that the median aligned with the one bedroom unit, and the one bedroom unit was affordable to somewhat, I think, eighty percent AMI.
Eighty percent.
Um it's in the report.
And that's, but then that goes in terms of, and not saying that every person when rents wants to be a homeowner, every, you know, um but. The variety, I'm just thinking about the variety and how, how, how accessible is it to attain? Home ownership in, in communities, um. Because then that will go based upon what you talked about earlier in terms of discrimination.
Yeah. Yeah, and we found it to be ninety thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars was the income that one would need to afford a median price co-op.
And that's a, and that's a, uh, for um one person, two person.
Um the median price would be a one bedroom, so it would be a one or two person house.
One, two person.
Yeah, yeah.
So the co-ops have anywhere from ten percent to twenty percent down usually.
Yeah.
Um they have different, the more amenities you have, the more expensive it'll be, so we, you could buy a one bedroom for anywhere from a hundred and something to. Eight hundred, you know, it just depends on what they have and proximity to the water and whatnot, and how old they are and.
Anything that's one with these things.
Hundred, I mean a hundred something in my, I'll tell you there, so.
Yeah. In production.
No, 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 we have.
You have um numbers in there, and forgive me if I didn't see it, uh I mean, how many units short are we?
There is a number in the county housing needs report.
Yeah.
That is based on their understanding of how many people are currently in the village in. How do I put it, it, in overcrowded housing, housing insecure situation. Um I, I don't have it in front of me right now, so.
So is that a county number or a Maric number?
That's a county number.
Is there anything that correlates to each municipality?
Yeah, each municipality.
That's what you're saying, is from the county, though?
From the county, they have snapshots for each municipality. Although that number is just for existing, not for like demand or in any way to keep house prices lower, that's just.
It's just, what is it like?
Yeah, that's just the number of people who are living in overcrowded or housing insecure situations in the village. At the time.
And I, I guess I'm just trying to simplify it, i- is there a number that we're, we're short X number of units?
There, there is a bad.
Okay. But it's, but it's, it's big.
I'll, I'll, I can give you the number. One thousand, thi- this is in terms of, I think, our household full demand, one thousand seven hundred and seventy. That's what we said.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know if it's units or households or individuals.
Okay.
So those, that is the number of people who are in substandard, severely overcrowded or severely cost burdened houses.
You know, that's the mark, that's the in-village market for affordable housing.
Yes.
Okay. But, but you have, it's units, not the uh, families, I mean, households.
One thousand seven hundred. Fifty five, actually.
One thousand seven hundred fifty five?
What is for the whole county?
Don't know if I can find that number quickly.
I have another question. Um this, this one of these charts, this is how uh for housing inventory by year, is that. Uh obviously, those numbers have gone down, and so that yours, it's, that's an indication of it's not production, that's just what was available, and as like, you know. Things kind of phased out with agreements that were very old, they kind of phased down, is that why the number dropped?
Yes, that's correct.
And I see it says, it's um Washington Housing Alliance, senior housing, and then bonus housing, is that like any other private developer that would come in?
Yeah.
And was given an incentive to keep X amount of units?
Yeah, a big part of those were the regatta units, those were plenty here.
My continental view.
I don't know.
There, that was, the regatta was like ten units and. I think the regatta was like ten or eleven units, and continental view was like eight or nine.
Yeah, I have all the background data.
I will, I love this, I love this. Because I just see like it's a drastic drop as we get to twenty, like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, like I did, like those bonus units essentially. Just nosedive, over a hundred units just disappeared.
Yeah.
And then Washington Housing Alliance, their numbers went from fifty to, it seems like it's in like the tens. So I just would love to know, yeah, so exactly, so I would want to see. Yeah, so exactly, so I would wanna see, I would, I, I'm interested in seeing that data.
So how do, how do you long-term deal with affordable housing if they age out after twenty or thirty or four years?
So, um, in response to that, the village did change its requirement. Um, so if it's rental, it is for as long as there is residential on property. The pastor remains affordable forever, so it's basically forever. Um, and if its owner occupied, it's uh, ninety-nine years. That's potentially good and bad when it comes to the owner occupied, because um, as noted earlier in the presentation, there's you know, discriminatory practices and lending, and that has also affected uh, and created a wealth gap between different racial groups in the country. And so, if you see that housing affordability tied to race, then you could potentially see a shorter term be beneficial for wealth creation um, to the parents living in those owner-occupied apartments. So there's good and bad, it keeps the unit affordable for ninety-nine years, but also does that help with closing the wealth gap?
Greg, uh, you know, as a planner, how would you characterize our um housing situation when it comes to affordability?
Um, probably no better than, than any of the peers, any of your peers in the county, I think. I think the, the region has done a poor job relative to the regional peers, so uh, NetKit, New Jersey, they have been a lot more uh, progressive in affordable housing production than has New York, largely because New York is a hopeful state and you know, every municipality, it's their own decisions. Um, the benefits of additional housing are always, you know, spread out through a, a regional housing market, which is kind of something that's abstract and not something people think about, but the impacts are always right there, you know. Right there, you know, you put a house, you put a new building, that's how many more cars, that's how many more kids. So there's, there's, that's always going to be a problem.
So it's the, the regional benefit versus
Regional benefit.
Versus the local impact, got it. And, and the mechanisms for, mechanisms for amplifying the, the, the regional benefit, I mean, are there, are there, are there mechanisms for for um, I mean, uh, Bob said there are, are ways to to steer it toward our, our, our local population, but eh, 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 wh- what are those mechanisms? Does it depend on the, the funding sources? How does it, how does it work?
You mean, uh, in terms of like?
Like saying that we, we only, we, we want these, these, these categories to have preference.
So what I said was, you may be able to do that.
Yes.
I don't know, I can't tell you what the characteristics are of the study that could develop that or would figure that out about Claire. So but what would have to happen is the plan would have to be developed and prove out through a study that it would still firmly refer to fair house.
So Bob, for example, if we did a study and it showed that we had five percent of the population was black, but the surrounding areas were like twenty percent, then we can't prove that continuing our practice is going to comply with fair housing.
So we're getting into some uncharted territory here, because there's not strong case law
Okay.
to define this.
But the gist is that you have to prove that you're not going to continue the existing practices that are not compliant with fair housing.
I suspect that if the study proved it wasn't going to get worse, you might be able to do it.
Okay.
Uh, or if there was a some, if you designed the program in such a way that there was some gain uh, in uh, diversity from the program. I think that's where you'd have to go, but it's, I can't tell you that I'm an expert, I know that anybody's an expert.
Okay.
The legal requirements on this.
So, my question, let's just say for argument's sake, so you're giving us a number that's over a thousand units, that is potentially where the village should be going. But how much will our current infrastructure handle naturally without an overhaul?
Yeah, and that's, that's a, that's exactly.
And I'll just mean affordable, I mean development in general, like where would we be? Have we looked into that?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have the number of, of where this is breaking. And also, you know, the county has their concerns too with, with um, how much the sewage treatment like to, to process. For that, you know, these are the, I don't have the answers, I just have the data from one perspective and
But then
to show you the implications.
So, yeah, and the implication I think would be, and I, I, I understand your question and I have that same question, but then implication would be if the, if as the, as the tide shift, then it just becomes that we're, we're not compliant with the um, with the county, because then you just literally have an influx of people who can afford to li- who can afford to live here. Um, and you literally just, people who, who can't, they will slowly disappear. And so then it won't be a diverse community, whether um, eth- ethnically or um, socio-economically.
Right, or it gets to the point where it's completely dysfunctional.
Lapses because you have too many people in my in, and it doesn't matter how much money you have.
To, to Greg's point, that same data, I, I, two weeks ago, I was at the, the workshop that the county did, and there are communities that are affluent communities that have very small percentage of people who are in poor housing or in severely um, rent um, burdened, because these are, so these communities have way lower numbers for, for, if we're, if we're gonna call this number a target, we have more, because we traditionally have been a, a community where there was more economic diversity, and so the, the, the communities that are less economically diverse and are wealthy communities tend not to have the same, if, if we're using this as a benchmark, tend not to have the same number, and that's an argument for regional housing, because it's a re- i- if we can solve this on a regional level, it, it's, it's, it's more equitable to all of the communities.
I agree.
If, that's if we uh, if regionally, everybody thought on the same page.
Well, um, the, this um, the, the, the statistics here, um, like four point three percent black, uh, uh, the twenty-seven point five percent Hispanic, is, is there trends on how, how it's going, are we, we losing diversity, gaining it?
Um, we try to look at that, especially in regard to the Hispanic or Latino population.
Yeah.
Because of the changes in the way they ask the questions, we don't know, we can't compare them.
Yeah.
So, the answer is we don't really know.
Um, yeah, and when the census does, it does their count every ten years, the demographics change, you know, like Greg said, I, I was looking at the um, looking at how they classify populations in nineteen seventy, it was white and non-white. That was the, the two classifications, now you have, you know, a much more accurate and uh, you know, detailed uh, demographic breakdown.
A, A D, the A D U question, um, uh, that I, I, I've, I've read, uh, and it seemed that, that the impact on affordability is not necessarily profound.
Uh, it, it all depends on production, again, uh, if, if you're in a housing constrained market, you have you know, they can be raised better, no? And you, and you make five ADUs, that's not going to do anything. It will for the families that are living in them, if, if it is cheaper, you know, on a micro scale, on a family-by-family scale, certainly. Uh, it will make a difference to the, uh, you know, senior homeowner who doesn't wants to leave their house but can't afford to stay there, can rent out a portion of their house to, you know, someone coming up. Uh, it'll help them and that person, you know, starting their career out, whatever the circumstances. Um, so, yeah, I mean, if you look at it academically, probably not, but if you look at it from you know, individual basis, it could, could help.
With the A D U, um, I know there's a space limit, there's a maximum square footage and there, and there are certain other things, right? So if you're the owner and you have like a three-bedroom house, you can move yourself into the A D U and then rent out the house, correct?
It's however you want to design the policy, yeah, so.
And what if you have a multifamily house? Um, I read through it all, but just in case I'm missing something, like a two-family house, can you also do an A D U?
That is again up to the board, and the policy, I think, um, I would probably in, if I were, you know, looking at that question, I would wanna look at, you know, parking availability on the street in the two-family zones um, and see if there is anything, um, if it's if there's a parking i- in a two-family zone, like you have a bunch of one-family zones that have excess space and parking, where is the most appropriate place to put it? In two-family, they already have, you know, lower rents typically for the second unit. Um, but two-family is kind of what you would expect to happen with an A D U. Think about it, you have the owner, he's off design, if you don't have um, an absentee landlord, you have an owner on the ground floor or on the top floor, renting it out. So on above or below, it would be a very similar circumstance to those, to those A D Us that are owner-occupied, um, that goes to families that have an owner.
So if you're looking at where you can fit it, fit the A D U on your property, assuming you don't use your attic or something else, and you're looking at parking, that's gonna limit us to certain residential areas, because parking's an issue here. Um, so basically where there are a number of one-bed, one-family homes that have space and parking, they could do A D Us but not other areas.
That, that would be for the board to decide.
I mean, for to make sense though.
I think that's a logical analysis to do, yeah.
And I'm, I'm sorry, one more question, I think some of the fear that I have heard personally is that we already have multifamily homes, so you might have a two-family house that is being used illegally as a three or four-family house, and that this is going to increase that.
Um, well, it wouldn't increase anything, that's
Or would make it harder to enforce?
Uh, it wouldn't, if, if you were only allowing it in one-family zones, you wouldn't be providing a pathway to legalizing and making those three families in a two-family safer. Um, they might not do that anyway, because they don't wanna have their tax bill go up, because this is illegal three-family. Uh, but at least if you find them and if you have something on the books that allows for them, then there would be pathway to compliance, uh, rather than an eviction.
And, and the, the, the whole, you, the whole granny flat part of this, in other words, that uh, it's not, it's something you're renting out, it's something you're providing for a uh, uh, you know, a uh a, a parent or a grand or, you know, a relative or a, you know, a, a extended family, I mean, is that uh, does that tend to be a, 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 a use of these things, or?
Yeah, I think all of these up, um, you know, for an elderly person in your family or for a young person starting out or for some Joe Schmo that responded to a credit list. I'm sure any of those will occur if you were to adopt a, a, an A D U policy.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, okay, we're gonna move past tenant protection for today, and we're moving on to establishing a mini-grant program using ARPA funds, uh, trustee.
Yeah, I, I can So, it's Dan, uh, it's only because Dan is the one who's um, I'm trying to, we're working with um, the applications, so he's gonna have to explain to the lovely as to why we are still still.
Uh, what I wanted to do is, um, I know that uh, the CRC, uh, Community Resource Center is working with uh, New York State Department of Home and Community Renewal about having a very similar program with um, state funding, so I wanted to have a conversation with the CRC and/or the Home Community Renewal uh, office about their application process, because it really seems like we could marry it together, uh, and have our program help meet unmet needs that arise from that program, so that's where I wanted to kind of steer the uh, the research towards.
So I, I, I actually talked to them a couple of weeks ago, and they, um, CRC is gonna provide outreach, they, the, um, they've they've partnered with three nonprofits who will be actually administering the grant application process, but they want West West is a target community, so they want organizations like CRC to help find people, and the idea is that um, they're gonna pivot some money that they thought would be for post-ida for rent. Um, for rent, for, for providing, you know, rent assistance, which didn't, which wasn't distributed to be used retro- prospectively and retrospectively for um families who we had, were repairing properties to help them ge- get repaid for some work they did or to do some work that is related to flood damage. And I think the number, they were using a number of like seventy percent, the families need to be at seventy percent AMI, there might be some, some restrictions. But they're hoping to work with HUD to change the description of um the, the, the funding allocation, so they can use it for these kinds of projects, so it might be uh, it might allow us to, to, to do a lot more than we could do with our ARPA money.
Yeah, but you know, at the very least, I think that um, even at, you know, seventy percent, uh, there could still be, you know, people who have unmet needs, so yeah, that's why I was, I was thinking about trying to gauge how that program's gonna work, and it, with this uh, funding that the uh, board provided from our ARPA funds, it would be a good, a good uh, uh, direction to uh, put that into practice.
So there was two things that were requested at that time, um, it was the money to be used for any person who needed h- um, help with um a- any um, housing development, eh, like, you know, rebuilding their homes or anything, that, anything that they weren't um that they weren't being, they weren't be able to um, um, be eligible for the, for federal or state funds. And then the second one was like about a fifty thousand dollar, I can't remember, I think it was like around fifty thousand dollars, and that was specifically for um if any, any homeowner, if any renter, if they lost, um, if they had to replace the boiler, if they had to replace a, a, a pump, whatever that they had to replace in regards to uh, flooding, that was damaged due, due to a flood, that they, they could use this money to be reimbursed. So for, I need, I would like for us to figure out as soon as possible, because this was stated like earlier last year, and we're still trying to figure out how, and people need their money.
Yeah.
People need that money, and then we, we are, we're still waiting to figure out how to, how to do a process, and I get it, because the process, the, the um the money that came through the CRC, um, if, that's not on them and that's not on us, that was through the state, right? And it took them a while, but I would like this to be not, I don't want it to be sped up in a way that is just we're putting out anything, but in a sense that is an urgency, like anything with flooding, that urgency for people to be able to receive this, this, this mini-grant money.
Yeah, what, what's the total amount again?
It was like two fifty for the first, two fifty and then fifty as a separate.
What I'd like to do is, I'll talk with Mary and Bob about the, kind of the legal mechanism from getting to point A to point B, because um, I know there, there are some rules with the ARPA money, and you still have state law about you know, give some, gift of funds and things like that, so I wanna make sure that
Of course.
we can establish a process that's uh, not just kosher, but Glock kosher. That's
Glock kosher.
Yeah.
Okay, so when do you foresee that, rather than us bringing it up every meeting?
Let me, let me have a conversation with uh, Mary tomorrow on this.
Okay.
She's available.
Bring it up again, will?
Uh, I, I, yeah, I, I, trustee guys are read is uh, more than happy to
Persistent.
Persistent. Consist, she's consistent and persistent. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is parking and traffic, uh, Dan?
Yeah, um, I, I spoke with uh, Sally today about uh, you know, possible location for the uh, if we're gonna relocate the uh, commercial vehicles, and you know, um, it's, it's pretty much gotten a lot better the last couple of uh, months, so I think So I think we're reconsidering that we, we may not want to discontinue this program. So I, I think that, uh, where they are right now, for the most part, is in the East Prospect Lot. Um, and, you know, they're parked there for, uh, right now, you know, basically twenty-four seven, uh, and then, um, uh, uh, in the Spencer Lot. Um, you know, we, we thought about some of the other lots, like say Bishop Lot, but, um, I don't think we wanted to kind of have that kind of a commercial activity right across the street from a bunch of residences and, uh, so. But I think the, uh, we've been, we've been having our talks internally and I think we're, you know, uh, we're okay with the car program after, after review, so. Uh, I'd like to just remove this from the agenda if there's any, uh, there's no objection from the board.
And, and let's see, the, the, that's fairly good income, right?
It's like twenty-four thousand. I mean, it's, it's, uh, in the context of a forty million dollar budget. It's, it's income.
A year?
Yeah. You have a dozen vehicles taking advantage of it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is amending the village code, uh, to add Lewis Street to the schedule for street cleaning.
Yeah, um, so Lewis Street is a street off of Grove. Uh, every single street around it, uh, we have, uh, street cleaning on, uh, uh, street sweeping on. Um, I think it was inadvertently, uh, left off the list uh, twenty-one years ago, because there is a Lewis Street and a Louise Street. Um, so I'm thinking that when they saw Louise Street, they just maybe thought it was a duplicate. But, you know, there's no reason why it should not be on the list. I spoke with the, uh, General Forum of Public Works, he says, yes, let's make sure it's on the list. So, uh, we're proposing that at the next meeting with the board's agreement that we just amend the schedule and establish the same restriction for Lewis Street that we have for the, uh, streets surrounding it.
Including Louise.
Louise is already in the, in the, in the code, but I said, that's the only reason I can think of, right? It made no, there's no rhyme or reason why it's, it's not there.
I guess, Dan, you again, additional surplus vehicle auction.
Yeah, uh, this is just, you know, a kind of a standard annual resolution. We have vehicles that, uh, are approaching the end of their useful life, and we auction them off and uh, before they become maintenance headaches, uh, and there's still some value to them. Uh, and it's part of our, uh, we call our fleet replacement schedule, so, uh, there are about, uh, I think half a dozen vehicles, you know, of, of, uh, vintage at this point.
What do we call vintage?
Uh, well, I mean, the, 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 you know, municipal equipment, uh, tends to get driven into the ground. And it's, it's not like your average passenger car.
That's because I got a.
How much money do we think we can get from it?
Twenty thousand, it's, it's, you know, it's not, sometimes there may be a bidding war in something, but, um, you know, it's, you don't get a lot of money for you know, ten, twenty-year-old pieces of equipment that have, you know, tens of thousands of miles on them or, you know, thousands of hours of use on them.
Southeast Consortium.
Uh, this is a, an annual resolution. Uh, the village and all municipalities are required to provide recreational and therapeutic services for individuals with disabilities. Um, we have partnered with many of our communities in this, uh, in this area and created the Southeast Consortium for Special Services, and they provide, uh, those recreational services for uh, you know, residents in the Village of Maranick, yeah, Town of Maranick, Larchmont, Ride, Portchester. Uh, I think Tuckahoe, it's, it's Scarsdale, it's a pretty, uh, it's an amazing program. Uh, our annual cost is, I think, uh, around sixty-five hundred dollars. Uh, and we actually, uh, because we lease, uh, space at the pavilion for programming, we actually wind up making more revenue from the consortium than we do paying out, but it's, you know, if we had to provide this service ourselves, it would uh, it would cost me many factors above sixty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, we have a resolution on for tonight, it's, uh, hopefully there's no, uh, there's any questions important as I can try to.
No, no, Quobings, it's a great program. Okay, moving on, budget amendment to fund emergency sanitary sewer repairs.
We had a failure at the Sylvan Lane Pump Station, uh, and we had to uh, get the, the pump station back up and running, or it's, you know, part of our public health infrastructure. Uh, it required new engine, I'd say new motors, temporary power, uh, new electrical system. And, you know, um, maintenance costs to keep the, uh, to clean out material from the system. Uh, also, uh, we anticipate about ninety-five thousand dollars for the repair. Um, and, uh, we're asking to have it funded.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is, uh, essential, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it usually public health infrastructure is among the most. I don't, I don't, I don't want to be indelicate about talking about, uh, uh, the purpose of a sanitary sewer and the sanitary sewer system.
Okay, um, are we ready to move to the next session? At six thirty-five?
God bless, how about that? Second.
Uh, the tree committee would be, uh, section one oh five one, say one oh five one C of the, uh, New York State Public Officers Law. For, uh, personal item.
Do we have to go immediately?
Well, yeah, we're trying not to say it that way. Okay, um, we have a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All those in favor? Uh, do we have a?
Motion to close the work session?
Second, all those in favor? Okay. Good evening, everyone, welcome to the eight o'clock regular meeting of the board. Um, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi, uh, just a reminder to please silence any cell phones, electronic devices. Um, we do have emergency exits on the left and the right for anyone who needs them. Um, and are we starting with you or am I starting with you?
Oh, I, I, I can make a, is something I wanted to say at the start of the meeting. Uh, this is what I thought about and what I decided to say, uh, we must all strive for greater and more consistent civility, and all, when I say all, that includes me. Uh, fewer and fewer people really want to serve public office, because too often our collective focus has shifted from problem solving to self-defense. Our motives are questions and facts are distorted, and each person's subjective appreciation of reality spawns passion. Uh, there, there's really too little discussion of how we can move our community forward and too many personal attacks. I pledge tonight to maintain my focus on constructive engagement, not responding to ad hominem attacks which reduce and distract our dialogue. Only by displaying constant self-discipline and focus can we hope to move the village forward. Petty bickering wastes time and has the opposite effect. But let us strive to be great together and each to contribute to that objective, which should bind all committed to this village. Again, I say we must all strive for greater and more consistent civility and all includes me. That's it. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who can make a statement? Annie?
I, I am going to make a statement, um, and, um, I'm going to read it because I've had a very long day. Um, so I'm concerned about the disrespectful comments that result in hurt feelings and distrust of each other within our community. Board of Trustees as elected officials, okay, sorry, alright, is this better? Is that better or just have to be really loud? This is, okay, I have to be really, okay, I'll be really loud. I'm concerned about the disrespectful comments that result in hurt feelings and distrust of others, of each other within our community. The Board of Trustees as elected officials are public figures who are subject to criticism and who must maintain grace under pressure. We have no business being disrespectful or rude to the public or to each other, and need to set an example of good behavior. I ask my fellow board members to always be mindful of our role and the privilege we have in serving the public and to always behave and to treat others in ways we would like to be treated. Personally, as a village trustee, I'd like to focus our attention on flooding. Given the repetitive trauma that many residents have experienced and the uncertainty about both the extent and timing of the Army Corps Plan, it's my hope that we can address a multi-pronged plan to mitigate flooding that anticipates the uncertainty while providing some flood relief or relief for flood victims. Given that we're looking for a new village manager, that our planner is leaving and we are in budget season, our staff is under tremendous pressure to keep the day-to-day operations of the village running smoothly. Let's focus our priorities and manage the expectations of what we can reasonably accomplish and work collaboratively and civilly with each other, staff, residents and volunteers, to make the village a more resilient place. Thanks.
I'm going to try to make a short statement, if I can do that. Similar to the comments that were made on January twenty-ninth of this year outside, which I did not witness. Um, but I did make a statement that, that I was condemning any kind of racial slurs or any comments to each other. I feel like now I have to be even more clear. Comments that are taken by somebody as racist or sexist or in, just incredibly uncivil or mean, we really have no place for them in this village. Now, I can't tell everyone what to do, everyone in this room is gonna walk out that door and do what they want to do. I can tell you, as a trustee and as mayor, I take this very seriously. I feel like I certainly have to lead by example and I cannot make comments to you as a mayor that maybe as a friend or, um, you know, neighbor that I might have been more casual with, and so I do take that very seriously. I did not witness the incident that happened this time either, and I'm sure there are tons of other incidents that I have not witnessed. So my statement, I understand that some of you want me to make statements much more quickly or much more, uh, condemning. I can't jump every single time something happens, and we're not all going to agree every single time. That doesn't change the approach I'm going to have up here. So I have already asked, I believe, but I will ask again for my fellow board members to join me in trying to set a better example. And respectfully, I'm also going to ask that we remember, the entire village can watch these meetings. While we're standing up at the podium, we're here to discuss village business. Please show the same respect to each other that you want us to show to you. If anyone has anything to say to me, whether it's outside or here, I will take it, I will listen. But please, we all need to participate. The campaign that I ran on building bridges was the intent I had coming in here. And maybe that will take longer than two and a half months. It doesn't mean I'm stopping, it just means it might take longer than everybody wants. So I appreciate everyone being here, we will have open comments, uh, shortly. I'm just going to ask you to please remember that for everyone who's asking for civility, the best thing we can do is start with it. So, thank you. Thank you. Well, we're going to start with a report from the Deputy Village Manager, Dan Sarnoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I think in the, you sent an email out today with your weekly update. You talked about what's going on with the Army Corps project, uh, and a meeting that we had had last week with, uh, representatives from the D E C, uh, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, the E F C. Uh, also, uh, representatives from, uh, our C F. This was there, uh, and, uh, State Senator Shelly Meyer was there, and our representatives from the, uh, county. The County, Plan Department County Executive's Office. Uh, one of the items that they stressed was, uh, you know, the core project is moving along very slowly. Um, and, you know, really to start looking at other funding opportunities to implement flood mitigation projects, uh, in the village and in the, you know, Mamaronek River watershed in general. Uh, one of the projects that they were mentioning was a new, uh, program called the SWIFT Current Program. Uh, that is a program, uh, for home acquisitions, uh, of areas, uh, homes that are located in the flood plain specifically. Uh, they mentioned, uh, homes that are classified as severe repetitive loss, S R L, which is, uh, anyone who has flood insurance, don't know if they're repetitive loss or severe repetitive loss. That is not information that I have myself, uh, but, uh, and also homes that are located in the designated floodway, uh, which is an area of the flood plain in which, uh, you are unable to uh, get grant funding to elevate your home. Uh, I am, uh, meeting with the state sometime this week, and we've established a subcommittee uh, where we will be talking about various projects that we can implement uh, to help, uh, move flood mitigation along in the Village of Mamaronek and again, in the region, because not every project that occurs in the village, I'm going to put it this way, a project that occurs in the town of Mamaronek or the village of Scarsdale can benefit the Village of Mamaronek. Um, so that's something that we're looking to do. Um, and like I said, I, I, uh, I'm trying to get more information on that SWIFT Current Program. Um, I first became aware of it late last year. At the time, uh, the, uh, State, uh, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services had no guidance. Uh, they still have no guidance and applications are due in, uh, mid-April. So I'm working diligently, uh, towards that effort. As far as, uh, other items filed for the record, uh, we have the intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County to view their land and legal records viewing system, uh, which is a program that allows us to uh, access county clerk records for, at no charge for the Village of Mamaronek. Uh, next file for the record, the agreement with McCarthy Fingar to serve as, uh, counsel to the Board of Appeals. And finally, the agreement with Tobin, uh, Bern- Bernardin and Wazie L L P to be village prosecutor.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to open up comments to the board, the maximum is five minutes. I'm going to ask you to please mind the five minutes, in case many people in the room want to speak. And also, please, I am asking that we try to stick to village business to the best of our ability.
Uh, thank you, trustees, especially for those early, uh, comments. I have lived my life, uh, following the words of Don't Be The Voice. That all social problems are human custom problems. Here in the United States, we have epidemic. We, we pay prices, and we pay taxes, and we pay for food, and we pay for restaurants at prices that we do not understand. And we do not appreciate the inflation factor that is filling the United States out of livelihood. I have served, I, I grew up in, uh, Harlem, you know, the nineteen-year-old when the nineteen sixty-four, even rights, desegregation and all those bills went into effect, I was eleven, nine-year-old when the brown case was signed. And I lived at the rates, literally at a hundred twenty-fifth, walking up and down on West Side and dealing with issues of homelessness, youth, race, and everything. and dealing with issues of homelessness, youth, race, and everything. And it goes back to the voice comment that all our problems are customs based on our customs. All I have to do is say fourteen ninety-two, it's a relation slavery, I could go on forever. And can't debate it because it's a fact. And I taught at Ford and Sociology Department. I've been a guest speaker at Columbia on these topics. I've shared a couple panels. I was chairman of the Board of West Cop, which includes all the Head Start programs, community action programs, mental health, all these programs. I was in charge of the nineteen sixty-four case. In addition, Valerie Opie, superintendent of America, and Yala hired me to do a consulting contract for the Day Labor Movement, for the Day Laborers in the village. And they accepted my, they paid me, they accepted my recommendation. And history has shown that my studies were the highest set right. Right now, in this confused state that we are in, we have issues also with the parking lot, the hunter lot, and affordable housing, all going back to the boys' comment on customs. And I believe that we should prove that we do have an enormous problem in housing and affordable housing. But that is not the way to go. I served as a, I'm a social worker also with a practice. I served as a crossing guard on White Avenue and other places in the village for two years. Not because I needed the money, even though I accepted it, but because I wanted to get the pulse of the village, know the people, know how they cross the street, know what the problems are. Three years, twenty-four-seven, as a crossing guard with graduate degrees and PhD courses and teaching and various courses. I did it to understand and be able to validate what I said. The Hunter Lot idea is a disaster. We do need affordable housing. That is not the way to go, and we must find it. As a crossing guard, I don't remember seeing anybody as crossing guards, how they're breathing it at night. I, I went, I went home, even, I'm, I'm, I'm up in age, but certainly very physical and competitive and an athlete I consider myself. I had breathing problems every night, standing in the corner, standing in the streets. My, my earring disappeared a lot. For all the, you, you take away that parking lot and you're going to ask, again, like I said, you don't know the prices, the prices and medication, the prices that are going to go up or the impact, but you do not know the environmental impacts whenever you order butter that comes from overseas. We have, I have emphasized a lot up here in the front about the Hampshire taking claim. And the, the village has lost two decisions on the Hampshire claim. And I, they're refusing all the money on the village website.
Mr. Kears.
This has to be consented and studied.
Sir.
The five minutes is up.
And these should be put on the website in order to protect all of us and to find out alternatives for, for, for housing issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Kears.
And it's hard to keep updated.
Sir, would you please be respectful of everyone here?
I thought I was one in Harlem, so that's what we do. You know, we don't stop when the government says, we keep going, you know, and.
No, but there's a room full of people who may want to speak. Would you please?
Yeah, I know they want to speak, but they want to hear what I have to say, but it has an impact on them. And that's why we started the rent strike and everything that goes with it. So please, consider the issue of the Hunter Club. It's, it's the cause to us. It's a, it's a class struggle what we have here, leaving on the class struggle.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now bring both on the topic too.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Good morning, State of Brown Road. I'm going to be brief. Two weeks ago, outside, I was honestly shaken to the core in fear. Because what I saw, even without voice, I was scared. What I saw was a man attacking a woman. And you can roll your eyes, but I'd love to see the video and I'm going to ask for it. Because I didn't know what was happening. I didn't know there was anything happening. But what I saw was Lou Young in Amy Siskin's face in a way that no man should be threatening a woman like that. Okay? So, and I, I'm going to get that video because I bet you that it was scary and it was wrong. And it was, I, this is my village too, and I should feel safe here too. And honestly, that was scary to me because I didn't know what was happening. All I heard was, and you're a miserable bitch. And that's what you said to Amy. I don't know what happened before. I know you had some kind of social media post about the beginning. I don't know. I don't care. I saw something that I should not have had to see. We, none of us should have been subjected to that that night. We all come here because we love this village and we are going to disagree. We are all unique, but I should not have felt shaken on the inside. And Manny, did you hear it? Because you were there. And Manny, you didn't say a word and I thought you laughed, but maybe I'm wrong. It happened. I don't care what history, I don't know. I just come here because I care about the things that you're doing that I agree with and I don't disagree with. We cannot have men or women attacking each other. And Lou, listen, you don't have an easy job. But I saw part of you as a kid. I grew up watching you on TV. Hey, Lou Young, the reporter. Now you, sometimes it's best to walk away when you can't handle it anymore. So I'm really sad by what I saw and honestly shaken inside, wondering if you were going to hit her. Because that's how close you were to her. It was very uncomfortable. It was scary. It was wrong. And you owe us all an apology. And perhaps, maybe this is not for you anymore. There's a saying, if you can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen. It is not easy to be up there. I get it. But you're going to be up there, you're going to have to act differently. And if you go around cursing people out and act, you don't belong there. You don't represent me when you act like that. Many people voted for you. I didn't, but many people did. And you do not represent the people that voted for you. And there was only a small group of us, but we saw it. There was probably about ten of us. You did it. It happens. Accept it, acknowledge it, and apologize because it's wrong. No woman, no, no one, man or woman, should have had to see what I saw that night. And again, I felt scared not knowing what you were going to do next.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Lubino Yubara. My former resident of the village of Mamaroneck and former trustee. I normally don't say much at meetings. I normally don't even come to meetings. And I find it nauseating to watch our board and our residents interact the way they do. There's always, there's a saying that I was taught from when I was like five years old. If you have nothing nice to say, don't say it at all. Why can't we listen to each other, help the flooding victims, help the store owners because they're parking, there is no parking. We need to listen to each other and not badmouth people and not actually pass comments. So like I said, there's a comment that I've been taught. If you can't, if you have nothing nice to say, don't say anything at all. Have a nice night.
Thanks.
Hi, good evening.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Justin Zaitunia. I'm the owner of the Smokehouse on the Avenue, our restaurant. This year because of my understanding that the debate, whether it's used in the parking spaces on the avenue for table service over the summer is, is under debate again. I know we've gone through it a couple of times for different reasons. I believe that the main reason right now is the concern of lack of parking, the traffic on the avenue, which I understand. Obviously, going to the restaurant every day, I'm not wanting to see the traffic on the avenue. I would just like to make the point that during the summer, the use of the outdoor space, especially in the last couple of years, outdoor dining has become a significant draw for a lot of our guests or any business restaurant industry, especially in the summertime. It's become a considerable part of our business over the summer and not just ours, but all the restaurants we got days on the avenue. At least the ones that use the opportunities. And not having it would be pretty, it would definitely change the landscape for our business over the summer. I understand the problems with the parking. I think there's other issues that drive the parking issue more than the use of the spaces that we use. I think last summer it was only a handful of restaurants that used it. If I remember correctly, maybe it was sixteen spots or something like that. The two other issues that I see the most that I think affect it more is the influx of, I'm going to say Uber, but all the third-party drivers that are up and down the avenue consistently. There are a lot of them that take up spots and more importantly, block, block the spots and block the street for everybody to drive up and down while they're waiting to pick up for an order. I don't really know exactly how to mitigate that issue other than like enforcement or like movement along. The other, the other thing that inhibits the parking is, I said this before, it's not, not going to be a popular opinion from the business owners side of it, but a lot of the staff that work on the avenue park on the avenue pretty much all day. So there's a lot of businesses on the avenue. A lot of my staff is parked there all day. Two-hour parking is not really enforced, it says two-hour parking, but including my staff who like to not park there. They park there all day for eight hours. It's, I don't know why they do it because it's cheaper for them to park in one of the adjacent lots somewhere else, but, you know, I know what they do. They're lazy. They don't want to walk a couple of blocks. But I think enforcing two-hour parking and trying to work with Uber or something, that's going to lead to more of a relief on the traffic than taking away the spots. I know the village makes more money off us renting the spots for the entire summer than actually people paying the meters because we pay the meters for the entire time. So if there's money issue, I know that that is benefit as well. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Oran. I'm here with my husband. And I'd like to also say, share something about something that shook me to the core as a woman as well. And that was four weeks ago today, as I stood outside and saw fellow citizens standing there with signs saying, I support affordable housing in Mamaroneck. And I witnessed not one, not two, but three individuals, some of whom are in this room, use racial slurs attacking these people. I heard one person say to the, a woman, go back to your country. I heard another person say, are you here illegally? I heard another person say, when are you going to start speaking English if she's having a private conversation with a friend? As far as I'm concerned, that's despicable and I'm hoping that all of you think so as well. I don't know where we stand on the issue of developing the Hunter Lot. I'm sorry, I'm shaking because I'm very upset. My husband and I have lived here for almost forty years. We started out as renters on the Austin Post Road. We would have been ideal candidates for an affordable housing complex. Luckily, because we have family who were able to help us, we were able to live the American dream and buy our first home and then our second home in Harper Heights. Our children were better for growing up in a neighborhood and in a community that's economically, racially, and I'm drawing a blank on my last word, ethnically, economically, and racially diverse. I think they were more prepared to go out into the world as a result of that experience here. Though I'm not fully cognizant of all the particular details about the development of the Hunter Lot, we, as a family, are a hundred percent in support of it. I would like to know when the architects are going to come back. They were not allowed to speak four weeks ago. I'd like to know when they're going to come back to present the plans so that everyone in the community can really hear what the plan is. Because the plan is not to put in poor housing. The plan is to put in affordable housing. So people who work in the village can hopefully live in it. I didn't interrupt you. I would really appreciate a little respect to not interrupt you. It's hard enough standing up here. I think that's all I have to say. I'm sorry. But I, but I'm hoping that the architects will come back. I'm hoping that the people in the village will hear the sound. And that the neighborhood needs affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
To answer your question, I believe at this point, in the month of March, we will have two meetings. One will most likely be about affordable housing and answering all the questions related to.
I'm sorry, I mean. Well, we, that hasn't been confirmed because we were, we, as a board, we decided that we were going to wait for the hiring of the consultant. And because of the timeline that Greg has given us, that has to be put. No, no, it's not. Because according to Greg, it has to happen like in the beginning of April.
Okay, so I didn't know that we had a, thank you. I didn't realize there was a.
Just, it, it is because we are waiting for the consultant and that was because what the board had decided.
I don't think I caught that. Okay, so we will, we, yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll do it. I'll do it. So we are going to be interviewing for a consultant who will help us go through some affordable housing issues, but also to go through these two proposals to see what's workable, what, and, you know, answer a lot of questions. The hope is then, or the expectation is then, and it looks like now it's going to be early April, that we will have a meeting in a larger venue. So whether it's one of the schools, whether it's Emmeline, somewhere in a larger venue where we will have one meeting at this point, maybe more later, on affordable housing, meaning what about the taxes? What about the property? What about the schools? What about the, everything that would be affected by it, no matter who develops it? And then a second will be the two developers, hopefully back-to-back, doing their presentations and answering questions only on their proposal, not on everything. So there's two different topics that we are going to make sure to have either speakers available, have all the questions from your forums that were sent in. We got about nine hundred questions. We're boiling them down because there were a lot of duplicates. So all of the questions will be answered when we have those two meetings.
So where are we now? May I ask? Where are we now with these interviews? Because I, I don't understand why, why, why we are interviewing consultants that the staff should be able to hire on their own. That's, 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 I'm still confused about that.
The same way, excuse me, the same way that we interviewed prosecutors and we interviewed Greece and they interviewed the search firm. We just have to interview the consultants and make a choice.
It's service.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, normally they do it the.
They're consultants for the Board of Trustees and we have to.
So we will interview them. We have, we will get probably the top three candidates, which the staff will pick. We will interview and like everything else, I think we've decided that evening pretty quickly and then we'll move forward.
Yeah, I sat with Nora in the, in the meeting and, you know, so, yeah, we'll do that. I just, I'm ready to take the, the staff's recommendation.
Can we, is there a date as to when the, when we are going to choose, finalize the three and then choose as we set a date for that?
No, but it'll be in March. So I think we should ask Greg to give us a better idea of timeline if that's okay. Because he knows more about it than I do. So I will send an email and CC, all of you to Greg Cutler, asking him about this, because he went home early. Hopefully that answered some of your questions. Glenn?
Wanted to be, wanted to ask was an avenue, or a two G. A couple of things. The last meeting I brought up about sewer permit, the sanitary sewer line. And I think I confused you a little bit between the two. Recently, put my house up for sale. And one of the things that you have to do in the village is you have to have your. things that you have to do in the village is you have to have your line, um, camera. Make sure there's, there's no breakage in your sanitary sewer line. If there is, you have to have it repaired before you sell the house. So, I got the permit, I got it repaired, that was closed. But you also need a certificate of completion for the sanitary, uh, sewer line. Or a certificate of compliance, it's called. And that means that somebody went in there, they put the camera up there, and that person signs off that, yes, I've inspected the, uh, the sewer line going into the street. And it needs the criteria of the village, it, it's good to go. The problem with that is that, um, that is only two months long. The certificate of compliance is only good for two months, or at least that's the way they've been enforcing it. I don't know where they came up with, came up with that number, but that's the way they've been enforcing it. I believe that unless there's some state law or some agreement with someone, that, that would be more proper to be six months. Because everybody knows, when you look to sell a property here in, um, in Mamaroneck, you can easily have a couple of bumps in the road, and you can go three or four months. And if it went beyond that, I'd have to go and have my line televised a third time. I had to televise it the first time. It didn't, it, it didn't pass, I had it repaired, and I gotta pay to have it done a second time. If two months went by and for whatever reason the, um, financing took a little longer, or something else happened, I would have to get it done for a third time. And that's what I find that, um, would, would be just, you know, egregious at that point. So, instead of the two months, I'd love to move that for six months. I don't think anybody's gonna do anything devious with their sewer line, if, if they've already spent the money to, to have it televised and, and, uh, probably dealt with. Uh, the other thing is kind of on the same subject. Uh, they passed a lot of, um, laws recently, uh, dealing with different permits and lateness of permits and closing permits and such like that. Uh, what I don't think you realize is, they've become draconian with some of the fines and, and, um, some of the rules that they put in. I've had, uh, stories where you have somebody who did something to their house fifty years ago, and they turn around and they need the architectural plans, and then they fine them for it. And by the time they're done, ready to sell their house, it costs twenty-five thousand dollars to the building department. Where you have, you know, some permit, you have the permit, nobody quite knows if, if it was closed or not. You know, forty years with the records, you have to get a brand-new permit, and you have to pay for a brand-new permit again, as well as getting it inspected. I think we, if, if you have something that was done forty, fifty, sixty years ago, which you might, you might have had two owners in between, and they didn't pick up on it, but now they're really picking up on it. I think the, uh, the, the fee schedule for that should, 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 you know, justify what the condition is. I mean, if you did it yesterday, you could understand what the cost was, hey, we caught you and everything. But it says, do we really wanna be catching people that, you know, something happened on their house forty years ago, and now they're looking to retire, they're in their eighties. By the, by the way, your, your, your important gift from the village is ten thousand dollars in fees in order to sell your house.
Thank you, Glenn.
Hi, I'm Yella Berman, um, Harbor Heights. I'm, I'm up here tonight to talk to you about the comprehensive plan, I'd like to know if anybody's read it.
Yes.
That's great. Um, in the comprehensive plan, they talk about the seawall at the harbor. Is there any plan on when that's gonna start? This was from twenty twelve.
Yeah, um, we actually received a grant to undertake a study for the, the design. I need to, uh, work on an RFP to retain a qualified engineering firm, and I've been trying to get some uh, examples of RFPs that Westchester County has, uh, put out recently, because they've done a lot of similar work. So I've just been working my way through that process.
Um, so, in the comprehensive plan, they also talk about, um, that they already knew that there was a parking issue. Um, so, also in that plan was using, um, municipal land for affordable housing. I'm just not sure as to why we would suggest using the Hunter Lot if the comprehensive plan already said that, um, parking would be very difficult to remediate, and according to the comprehensive plan, nothing was implemented or started to avoid using the lot, like, I don't know what, who, whose idea was it to use the lot? Is it because it's the only space available? There's really like no space to.
I, um, I know it was in discussion when I came on the board. I know, I know Glenn brought it up.
About three years ago, I made that suggestion.
Yeah.
To use the lot.
Yeah, but not, not the way they proposed.
Right, because if you use the lot, according to the comprehensive plan, they have something in there that earmarks the parking at a multi-level, that each spot to create by building on top of it would cost about twenty-eight thousand dollars per spot, which would basically come to six million dollars to rebuild the lot. And that, that would be at, at our cost. So, has anybody thought to just get something to repair the lot? I mean, if they can repair Bruckner Boulevard and hold up Bruckner as they're fixing it, I'm pretty sure that we can find a way to use our tax dollars better. I mean, I know you guys want affordable housing. Do you know that the Luna Plan wants to pay the village a dollar for the property? One dollar. And they, uh, Westham, Westham's plan is fun, if you read it, it's fantastic. Um, you can sense the sarcasm in my voice, right? Um, they want to, they, they, they wanna pay five million dollars for the parcel. And that came from the assessment of the town of Mamaroneck, because that's what they have assessed at, when in actuality it's worth about nine million dollars in today's economy. And then, in their plan, Westham is basically just a developer, like Luna. Um, they get a fee of close to six million dollars. I, I'm not, I'm not really following where we're going with this. We, we net nothing. So, wouldn't it make more sense to rehab what we have there already and maybe continue to find places to rehabilitate for affordable housing instead of shoving it all in one space? Um, along with that, the comprehensive plan during the moratorium states that multifamily dwellings put an impact on the schools. According to Westham, that's not true, they have some weird statistic that says that they don't, they won't have any impact on the schools, which is impossible, because usually people who rent have young children. You know, you buy later on. So, I don't know where it's not impacting the schools. Um, and finally, in that plan, uh, is a Clean Water, Air, Green Jobs Environmental Bonds Act, where forty, four-point-two billion, New York was gonna take on four-point-two billion in debt in order to refund, uh, restoration for flood mitigation, where's our share?
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, so from Florence Street, I'd like to address a previous speaker that said it would be nice if people could work and live in the Marinac. Um, that's just not going to happen, unfortunately. Um, last week, last meeting, I talked about having spoken to somebody on the Town of Marinac Housing Authority, and they had told me that if they were to build the Homage Park today, they would not have been able to have the criteria that they had at the time, because laws have changed, and now you have to go to lottery. It was mentioned by a trustee that we were going to try to find out if we could help the flood-prone victims in this, um, proposal. Well, I don't know if you got your answer, but I did find under the, um, Fair Housing Act, under the heading of what is prohibited, what is prohibited is setting different terms, conditions, or privileges for rental. What is also prohibitive is using different qualification criteria. So it looks like, as the CEO of Westham said, we would be going to lottery. Now, who's in that lottery? New York City, the five count, for the five boroughs, and four other counties, that's nine counties. Uh, according to the twenty-twenty-two census, that is eleven million people. If only five percent of them were eligible, that would be five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people eligible to apply. We have about twenty thousand people here, five percent of that is one thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, one thousand. Now, the CEO of Westham also says, well, we're gonna market it in the Marinac, and we're not worried about the secondary market. Well, if you Google affordable housing opportunities near me, you get these kind of hits, affordablehousing.com, lowincomehousing.us, affordablehousingonline.com, affordablewestchester.com. All of them actually presently have listings in Mamaroneck, and all of them have links on how they can help you apply. So the help is out there for those five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people. Even in the affordable housing report you got tonight from Mr. Cutler, he wrote, quote, "As New York City and the surrounding region have added jobs and people during this past decade of economic growth, there has not been enough new housing added to meet the demand." Let me repeat that, as New York City and the surrounding region. Don't think they're not gonna wanna come to Mamaroneck. I have one other question. I wrote a letter to the board about a month ago stating the following, the revision of the Westham proposal to the RFP put forth should be rejected. On page twelve of the Request for Proposals Under Additional Information, it states revisions to proposals are not permitted once submitted. Some board members will say that the community called for more parking, and this revision provides that. Nonetheless, these are your rules and procedures on your RFP. And as such, I would expect the Board of Trustees in the village to abide by their own rules of submission. I was told that it was being sent to legal, and I'd like to know if we have an answer as to whether or not the village doesn't have to follow its own rules and procedures of their RFP.
Want to respond to that? I don't, I don't have the proposal, the RFP in front of me right now.
Well, I just said, on page twelve, it says additional information.
My, my recollection is that the. Oh, sorry, the, uh, RFPs usually say that the village has the right to waive those kinds of formalities.
I didn't see that.
If, uh, if it's in the best interest of the village. So the board, board generally has the authority to do what's in the best interest of the village.
I think you need to reread the RFP then.
Yeah, I don't believe it says.
I have a number of items I just wanna remind the board about. Um, the first thing I would say is that the Hunter Lot has been a pretty prominent issue in the village. I would hope the village attorney would be more familiar with things in it, like, can you change it? Can you change your proposal? I mean, I, I'm just kind of stunned by it. Um, so, there are a number of things that are getting kind of, um, you know, passed over, and I'm not saying it's not legitimate, but I'd just like to raise the live-view cameras. There was some talk months ago about returning, like, and saving the residents a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year. Is that still on the table, or are we just going to keep these in perpetuity?
That was discussed in flood mitigation, FMAC. Um, I don't think it's been on our agenda yet, has it?
I think the, the, the FMAC, you know, just proposed the idea with the board, but the board hasn't made any sort of, given sort of directive to staff.
It seems like a, you know, fairly simple decision. Um, the sanitary sewer certificate that Glenn brought up at the last meeting, I believe, Dan said he was going to check and see if there are any state laws that would limit it to, um, sixty days. I've read the code, I've looked, I checked the Google for state stuff, I found nothing that limits it to sixty days. Were you able to find anything?
Uh, I've been working with the building inspector on this. Uh, she has some, uh, family issues that she's been dealing with the last couple of weeks, so I've been waiting for her to have that settled before finishing the conversation.
Well, we have a village attorney, we have the code, it says what it says. You have a Google. As far as I read it, it's good until the next renewal of that. The next renewal of that is the transfer of the home. So I hope by next meeting, you can educate residents about that. Um, flood plain manager. Have we, when it's open?
Gino is the local flood plain administrator. It's, there's not a flood plain manager, the title is local flood plain administrator.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Is he getting a ten-thousand-dollar stipend for that?
That's what was, uh, offered to him, yes.
That's right.
That's what was in his, uh.
But that hasn't been discussed, that hasn't.
It was not discussed on the board yet.
I'm sorry, that's in his contract, or he's getting?
Give me one second. Are you saying that it's proposed for the next budget year, or was it already done prior?
I'll check, but that was something that was communicated to him, uh, when, uh, the manager appointed him the local flood plain administrator. I, I don't have. Uh, I, I, it was the other last year, maybe, I can't recall.
We'll have to look into it.
The soil that's stockpiled from the dredging project, we have a contract to have that removed. Is that on schedule to be removed, or, I haven't been there in a week, but it's been there for, since, I think, August?
I, I'd have to check.
As I said, we have a contract with JT Clary.
Yeah. Part of it is removal.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that isn't a phone call and say, come on down.
I, I, I don't know if they're gonna pick up their phone at nine eighty-five right now, so.
Um, MS four audit. If nobody, if somebody on the board doesn't understand, the MS four program is the chief water quality program in New York State. We had an audit a year ago. We got the lowest possible grade, unsatisfactory in our compliance. The auditor required the village to submit a number of documents to the state by April thirtieth. Village has been given four extensions, still have not supplied it.
April thirtieth of this year.
I'm sorry?
April thirtieth.
This year or last year?
Last year.
Thank you.
The Florence Park Project, um, they're gonna redo the surface in the playground. Um, I hope that the board will consider using Fibar, which is a wood product, natural, it's not recycled tires. Um, it's cheaper, it lasts as long, it has all the benefits of the board in place. I believe it should be from an environmental standpoint and a cost standpoint, is that it, Sally? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
For a body, Washington Street, I'm a member of the Traffic Commission, and a member of the WGN, I was not gonna get to speak. Participate, listen. But I would feel remiss, because I had to receive an early text from residents that are listening on home CTV. And after everybody's, you know, open, opening comments, and you, Mr.
and you, Mr. Young, with your statement about civility, you got quoted in saying, oh, boy, when Mrs. Berman got up to speak. So-
That's what I was talking about, but it's-
So with that being said, we voted you in as trustees, we're trusting in you to listen to the voice of the people and to treat us with the respect and civility that is due to us. Whether you agree with us or not, there has to just find, you have to find some medium and some self-control. And, and be really humble in your statements and actually follow through the cap. But with that being said, I'm gonna get down to business. We have a comprehensive plan that we need to follow. We have a village that needs to be repaired. We have a flooding and traffic issue that needs your utmost attention. We're focusing far too much on affordable housing at this moment in time. We should be discussing why we're overdeveloped. We should be referred, we should properties that are in disarray at present time. We have housing that we aren't taking care of. The Washingtonville Housing Alliance has many, many buildings within the Washingtonville area that are in disarray or subpar and don't benefit our community. They don't look well, they are not taken care of, and they're just mu- nearly existing. I don't think that's fair to the residents of the flood zone to have to have one-two punches and no quality of life and no curb appeal. And I don't know why it seems to be okay with everybody to just, you know, shove the eyesore on the wrong side of the tracks. We have a parking and traffic issue. We have not gone to the table to create a comprehensive plan to even address that. We have a residential parking program that we don't utilize and that we don't enforce, that needs to be extended and needs to be umbrellaed throughout our whole community. Our parking and traffic i- i- issues have grown exponentially. But flooding in general, we, we should be the poster child for all things flooding. And the only conversation that, that should have been had for the past three years should have been creating a master plan to tackle this project. But we're still not even at the drawing board. And that's a shame. And it's a shame that residents have to come, who really never come to a board meeting, to have to speak about your behavior. And have to catch it out at the end after you make a speech. How am I supposed to feel from the last six years unless everybody grows in the same direction? I don't simply understand how we could behave this way. Village of Mariner is a laughing stock. We need to do better. And if you can't, if you can't handle the job, go and let other people in place that are willing to do it with their heart and soul and love the village like trustees before you have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Uh, we're gonna open up public hearings.
Um, so I, I need a motion to open the public hearing on TLLD, which is amending chapter twenty-one, the Code of Ethics.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay. Um, do you wanna review what it was?
We have, we have, um, we have three members of the ethics board who are here, so if um, I, I guess they actually, and one, at least one of them was very involved in the code drafting, so can I ask, can I impose on you, Dan? Can you, can you do a little explanation? You've done this before, but.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Carson. And I am currently Chair of the Ethics Board for the Village of Marineric. I'm here with Dr. Susan Burnsway. And this is Cherry Tovell Allison, who are also members of the Ethics Board currently. And I was also Chair of the Ahoc Ethics Code Review Committee to revise the Code of Ethics. I've appeared before the uh, the board on a couple of occasions to explain the changes that were made in the Code of Ethics. Uh, the Code of Ethics uh is uh was prepared several years ago, it was the first Code of Ethics, I believe, that was implemented for the Village of Marineric. And over the course of time, there became some of, I, I said, combination of confusion and concern about the uh uh, the interpretation of the code and how it applied uh to members of the public and to persons doing business for the Village of Marineric. Just as background, I'm, I'm an attorney, uh, an attorney for about fifty years. I'm a resident of the Village of Marineric for aging with the son's age, thirty-one years, um, and um, still here, no plans to move. The code, what we did to the code or proposed uh for the Code of Ethics was to clarify the provisions and to make clear uh, the definitions who the code applied to. And most importantly, and I, I, I think speaking on behalf of my fellow board members, find that there is some confusion as to what is in the code and applies. And what we have made an effort to do in revising the code was to make clear the, to basically revise all definition sections. So it is clear uh what constitutes a relative uh, what a relationship of what constitutes a conflict of interest. To make clear that informal opinions from the Ethics Board cannot be obtained. Any formal opinion, any opinion of the Ethics Board must be in the form of a formal, formally complicated decision. Uh, there are three ways the Ethics Board can arrive at or issue rulings regarding the code. One is filing a formal warrants complaint. Secondly is the issuance of a formal advisory opinion made at the request of a village employee or like official. And third is a finding made by the Ethics Board on its own initiative after undertaking an investigation. Uh, I would remind you will point out that the Ethics Board is comprised of five volunteer members. Uh, it does not have a staff, um, and it does not have a budget, which the Ethics Board hopes to change in the coming budget cycle. So uh the Ethics Board does get requests for opinions, it gets requests for complaints that actually unfortunately do not conform with the format that is set forth under the Code of Ethics and we have made great efforts to make clear uh what the proper form is that takes place. We have made clear or attempted to make clear deadlines for the filing of annual exposure statements and sanctions for earlier to file timely annual exposure statements. Uh, we've made an effort to make clear when conflicts of interest must be disclosed and to whom contract conflicts and potential conflicts must be disclosed. Importantly, we have proposed that the Code of Ethics be posted as required by law in public spaces, be issued to contractors seeking to do business with the Village of Marineric who must acknowledge that they have read and understood the Code of Ethics before engaging in business with the village. And um to uh also institute a training program for all village residents, all village employees and board members in the Code of Ethics. And to render that responsibility from a five-member Ethics Board that, as I mentioned, does not have a staff to the HR department, which can institute a formal training program. There are many training programs that are online, these include ethics programs, and we propose that that be transferred to the, you know, the HR department. We've also tried to make the terminology in the code uh consistent and in keeping with the trend of current laws, eliminating personal pronouns, uh, so we can take cognizance of the, of the way we live today. That's a general overview of the um, the major changes that were made in the code. Uh, and I and my colleagues would be very happy to answer any questions anyone had regarding, has regarding the public.
Thank you, sir.
Um, surely.
Why don't we have you sit down with the microphone and let them come to the podium? It's probably the easiest way to do it.
You have to come up.
Um, yeah, come on up, sorry. It's a public hearing, so yeah, everybody has three minutes if they wanna ask questions.
Sit down if you want.
Yeah, if Dan could-
Dan, why don't you sit over there?
You find that somebody's in violation of an ethics code, are they required to, let's say, recuse themselves from whatever they're accused of doing?
There are provisions in the Code of Ethics that require the recusal of individuals who have an interest in a matter of, that is under consideration by a board, including board trustees or any of the many boards and committees that uh are, that serve the Village of Marineric. Uh, there are specific provisions that require recusal when there is a business interest or monetary interest. With respect to another conflict of interest, it is often a matter of interpretation. And the Ethics Board does get inquiries regarding whether a um a conflict of interest either exists or could exist if a uh, a member or trustee or uh took part in a particular transaction, so we do get those inquiries.
Right, so what I'm asking you is if you determine that they're in, there's an ethics violation, are they required to then remove themselves from being able to vote, let's say?
If the Ethics Board renders an opinion that the action of a voluntary board member or elected trustee would cause, would violate the Code of Ethics, they are required to uh, to abide by that decision. And if they don't, uh, the Ethics Board would, can convene an action for violation, which is punishable by a fine.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions uh for this public hearing? Yes? Or comments?
Yeah, um, I may have missed it, but you did all the public hearing. Okay. Um, I, I do hope the board will leave this open for a couple meetings. Um, it's, this is a long document and it's hard to understand the changes from the old document. And I guess I would say that some of the things are a little confusing, especially when you're not an attorney. So I'd just like to raise a couple of things. Um, the first one's really simple, under L discrimination, there doesn't seem to be any um category for age. Um, we have creed, color, national origins, gender, orientation, or disability.
Good touch.
I believe age should be added.
Yeah.
I agree.
Um, the other issue is under standards of conduct. I'm gonna read it for the board.
Which um, which letter is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, twenty-one four. At the bottom of the page, but I don't have the page number.
It's okay. Is it like you said L, but which is it, M, which um letter? Was that the end of the document? Um-
He's at twenty-one four, right?
Mm-hmm, page twelve.
It, it's, it's twenty-one four, standards of conduct.
Got it.
It's right after the definition.
Got it, thank you.
What, keep the time repeating, right?
It's twelve, he's, no, it's not.
Twelve?
Well, that's the end of it. Go ahead, why don't, go ahead. Just go, sorry, go ahead, yeah, we'll find it, find it.
I'm gonna read it. Um, every covered person must endeavor to pursue a course of conduct consistent with the Declaration of Policy and other provisions of this chapter and strive to act so as not to raise reasonable suspicion among the public that the covered person may or is likely to be engaged in conduct that is in violation of the public's confidence and trust. I think it may be a good idea, and I don't know if you can do it in the law, but provide some examples of what would be a violation of that. So, you know, I'm just gonna talk about an incident I had. That four years ago, the village, the village attorney, the building department, the mayor got together and without any evidence obtained a criminal search warrant for my house. Four village employees, only two authorized under the warrant, entered my home, took pictures, and then I was given seven violations. No evidence, again, all speculation. Apparently based on anonymous complaint. So would that violate the standards of conduct? And I'll do another one, 'cause I've had a rough few years here. Um, I had a plumbing leak in my house. I had to get estimates, I had to figure out what the, where the leak was from, it can sometimes be hard to figure out. Village manager had my home surveilled. Put somebody out there with a camera, take pictures. And repeatedly, the building department, me, building department accused me of doing a repair without a permit. I told them repeatedly, I have done no repair without a permit. Would that be a violation of the standards of conduct? Seems to me, but I'm biased, that it would be. So I think some clarity needs to be brought to that because that's a pretty important category of standards of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I do hope you'll leave it open, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from residents regarding the new ethic, the updated ethics code?
Well, though you said you had some.
Yeah, I have, yeah. I didn't wanna, I wanted to make sure the public was finished. Uh, two things that uh I, I had, Dan. Um, on um, K two, uh, talk about the covered person, meaning anybody who works for the village or uh, I, I guess serves on a volunteer board or um, or is an elected official, one of us, uh, is barred for two years from doing business before uh uh, boards or with, with the um, uh, with the village after, after we leave, right? Uh, but it says, except with the prior approval of the Board of Trustees. And I'm, I'm wondering what the thinking was on providing that waiver.
The, the purpose or the intent of the, the waiver clause was to enable someone who was uh, in a position of um, I'm trying to find an article way to phrase this, but to permit someone who was earning a modest salary and then possibly moving on to a higher salary to not um be automatically barred.
I see.
Have an opportunity to come before the board and, and get a waiver and to do so as expeditiously as possible so that you're that there's a good reason to bar somebody who has unique knowledge uh, and is in a relatively high position
Yeah.
for the village uh from going out and cashing in
Yeah.
advantages they had, but if someone is in a um ordinary service position.
Yeah.
Uh, if they wanted to move on to a trade where they got a higher salary and they might have some unique knowledge, is not to hold up their career
Yeah.
and their, their earning potential and enable them to get a waiver.
Given my, given my background, I'm that, I guess I'm naturally suspicious. I, I envisioned it as a, a, let's say, a former board member who is politically connected, who who leaves and then gets a waiver to, to uh represent people before land use boards or something like that, I mean, it would uh, but that, that would, that they could get the waiver. but that, that would, that they could get the waiver that way, couldn't they?
It's possible, but at that point, you have a legislative body that can turn that person down.
Yeah.
But it was really, we had heard on the ad hoc committee stories of people who had to wait a long, long time to, uh, well, two years in order to just move on with their career and get an opportunity in their own field.
Right.
And that was a, a, a way of giving people in that category
Yeah.
an opportunity to, to not be similarly situated to somebody would be gaining a higher economic advantage.
Yeah, but it, okay, but it just involves a village, not, not, uh, okay. All right, the other thing I had a question about is, I noticed that the, uh, on the Board of Ethics, there's a prohibition about Ethics Board members taking an active part in partisan political management by, for example, holding pub, uh, office in political clubs or parties, organizing or managing political rallies or meetings, or assisting in a partisan voter registration drive, and that seems, that seems perfectly reasonable. Um, what, what is political management? Is that, is that, uh, would, uh, what does political management mean? I mean, is that, is that, uh, let's say, of being on a a, a district leader on a, on a political committee, or a, uh, or is it, was it a, a political campaign manager? And wha, wha, what is that?
I can't answer that question definitively. I think it's a matter of interpretation.
I mean.
That language out of either state or federal law.
I see.
We debated extensively how to precisely define what constitutes prohibited conduct on the part of an Ethics Board member. And we consider the statute as currently written to be ambiguous, and so I went to the Hatch Act and I went to the federal law and state law, and I think if I did an almost literal lift from what is existing and upheld law and pasted it into the, the Code of Ethics with some of that.
Yeah.
Some parts of the law, and I did that, or we did that, um, with respect to, uh, uh, other, some other sections, and, um, so some of this is going to be interpretive.
Interpretive. Uh, uh, could it be made more, more explicit?
You can, I, I think one can make an effort to define terms in the Code of Ethics to such an extent that you may wind up with something like the Code of Federal Regulations. But we made an effort to be as specific as possible and also, uh, I mean, they, we still, we, we eliminated a great many ambiguous phrases. And we left some in which appeared to be, to need to be ambiguous, but, uh, based on case law and administrative law, appear to be sound. So, uh, to answer your question directly, yes, I suppose it can be uh, more specific than that, and also can be omitted.
Right.
Um, and I leave that to, uh, if, I, I don't know what course the, or the Board of Trustees will take insofar as going through each section and enacting or not enacting, if that's, of course, uh, up to you at this point.
I read, I read it top to bottom, and, and those were the two places that, that seemed that, uh, that maybe there might, might have been something missing. My interest is in, 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 you know, a firewall between active politics and government, uh, you know, wha, wha, when, when it's going on, and, and I would, I would love to see, uh, that prohibition expanded to all volunteer boards and to include, uh, you know, uh, party district leaders, that sort of thing, so that, uh, people couldn't do both things at the same time. In other words, you pick a lane, you either volunteer or you involve yourself in, in political activity, because the, the mix has been problematic, uh, at times. So I, I was just inquiring if, if, if that could be addressed.
I think at this point, it's up to the board.
Okay, all right, I, I'd like to submit that.
The, uh, it was, this is probably the most discussed topic in that section had to do with whether you, whether you could put out a long sign.
Oh, yeah, the, the, well, the long side, long side, I get that, that's, that's, in other words, a long sign is the one thing that's explicitly permitted. But beyond that, beyond that, are you gonna be, uh, uh, let's say, a district leader who's voting to, to, uh, in, in, uh, to endorse candidates and do all that stuff and still be, uh, uh, a, a member of a board who is asking to be appointed? There, there, there seem to be ob, obvious points of conflict there. So, uh, that's why I wanted to, I'd like to address that if they, and, and ask what the rest of the board thinks about that. That's it, that's it for me.
I would, I would find that very problematic, um, with, with the First, Second, and Fifth Amendment of the Constitution that for you to turn around and take volunteers, unelected officials, and tell them as a volunteer, you have to give up your right to advocate for either political party. I, I don't, I don't find that, um, I don't find that correct.
I mean, these are elected positions, you do, just.
No, no, you, you said an unelected, I, so you said positions of volunteers.
Oh, no, 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 no.
As you're, you know, if you're just talking about the, but even, even the board up, up there, you're an elected official.
Yeah.
Almost every person who's an elected official is a member of a political party, that's how you get elected.
Right, right.
And you're a chairman or everything else of the political party, so I don't know how you don't mix those two.
Well.
And there, there, it, it, it's an impossibility. Everybody's a member of, like, Chuck Schumer is since his chairman of political.
Not suggesting you not be a member of a political party, Glenn, I'm suggesting that you not be an active participant in, in a, in a political work.
That, that's, that's the way they vote the president, that, that you, you, you actually pick delegates, and if you look at the delegates, half the delegates are either senators or a House of Representatives or something else, I just don't see how, if you're actually gonna run for a political office, that you somehow can completely wall yourself off from being ac, active on committees and such. You're active on a committee and then eventually, if they like you, they will put you up as, as, as a candidate. But they usually don't reach to the outside and find candidates, usually they find a candidate within, within, within the committee, that, that caucuses. Usually you start as a volunteer in the village.
I understand.
Work on a couple of boards. You, uh, you work with, you know, either, either party, or you work with other, uh, political groups within the village, uh, whether it's flood, whether, whether it's housing, wha, whether it's, um, anti-discrimination, you work with charities, you might work with the library, and from there, people like you, then you go and you run for office, and I don't know how in the world you pick what you could and couldn't roll off in that case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Stark, seven oh four, Palmer Quay. I didn't, I'm talking to you, so you can.
I'm, I'm taking notes, Robert.
I've been a district leader for, uh, ten years. I've been a, uh, on the flood committee for six years. I'm now in my flood year on the traffic commission. Nothing I have ever done in terms of flooding committee, traffic commission, has been politically connected at all. I'm on these committees because I love this village. I wanna contribute my, whatever qualities or abilities I have to make it a better village. And I was kind of blown away by your suggestion that you can't be a district leader and be on a volunteer committee, that's absurd. That's absurd. Everyone who is involved politically is, is involved politically because they love the village and they want to do the best for the village. They want to, uh, support candidates who will support the village, be good guardians. And I found it insulting that you would say that to people in this village, and who are here, who are on volunteer committees. You're on a volunteer committee because you want to do something productive and help the village. That was an insulting comment you made.
Well, that would, it would apply to me also, but, thank you. Sorry, anybody have any thoughts on that?
So I'm trying to understand, you think you're, you're suggesting that if someone is a volunteer, like on the planning board, zoning board, BAR, Board of Ethic, well, Board of Ethics has, has.
That's why if it's.
Board of Ethics has a prohibition because they are trying to be neutral, um, but any of the other committees, the tree committee, the traffic commission, that any of the else volunteers could not be district leaders.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if it's.
I'm, I'm asking, is that what you're proposing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I'm just, just.
Raising the issue, if it's, if, I'm raising, no, Nora, I'm, I'm raising the issue that if it's, uh, if it's something that you want for the Ethics Commis, uh, Committee, why wouldn't you want it for all your, or your committees?
Oh, I think the Ethics Committee needs to be neutral, and so I think them not being involved in politics is, it's, it's very typical that ethics, I've looked at a lot of ethics laws, and it's very typical that ethics committees, ethics commissions, ethics boards are, have a balance of political party are represented by a balance of parties and are, are discouraged from participating in the political process. But my question is, do you want to have all of the other boards and commissions pre, members precluded from being district leaders?
I'm just, I'm just. I'm, that's my question, yeah.
So I think that that's not legal. Because the way you become, well, just let me say, the way you become a district leader is, you know, you run, you collect petitions and you run. And the qualification for being a district leader in New York State is that you can be a district leader in any voting district within your own, um, New York State Assembly District, that's the parameter. So then we would be saying, we would be telling people who join boards and commissions, you have a choice. You can either be politically active or you can work as a volunteer, so we're imposing that on people. I mean, we're, so we can't tell, I don't think we can tell people they can't run to be a district leader, because that's New York State election law, we don't have control over that, so we would just be telling our volunteers, if you're politically active, do not bother to volunteer.
Or, 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 or give that up and take your, I, I, I'm just raising the issue, Bob, is it, is it legal or? It, it just struck me, it seemed to be, uh, in other words, if, if, if the, if, if you don't want politics and ethics, then you don't want politics and anything else, you know? Right?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any law that would make it illegal, and the way Nora put it, I think, is correct. You have an absolute right to be a district leader if you want to be a district leader, you don't have a right to be on a village board, and you can set the criteria for members of village boards and, and commissions and agencies, and one of those criteria is you cannot be a, help the committee member of a political party. That's a, that's a criteria. So I think, I don't think it's illegal, you may not want to do it.
I'm at, what I was saying is you can't tell people they can't run for district leader, so we would have to limit it internally.
You, you were saying, what are the qualifications of being appointed?
It's not being a district leader.
Not be a member of a political committee.
Yeah.
All right, Lani and Manny, do you have any comments?
I think my only comment is that we should keep this open, but that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I think we should keep it open, and there's no legality to Lou's suggestion in, in the codes with them, but sorry, um, I said it should be, I think the, the, um, it should be, it should still be open, but if there is no legal issue from what Lou was saying and, and what as to what Nora's saying, and if that's something we can look into, then, you know, fully. Nora, your, your comment was just done. Is there anything else we need to? Is there anything in regards to Lou's comment, is there anything else that needs to, we need to look into?
I don't believe there is.
Okay.
More than just for the question.
No, no, I, I just wanted to raise the issue, that's all.
I have one question, and it's minor, but, um, and I, and it's for you, Dan, the New York State law has a, a limit of fifty dollars in their expenses unless they've changed it, and we have seventy-five. And I was, I was filing.
Do you mean for gifts?
For gifts, yeah, and I was filing this week, I found many, many, many files from our, from your committee's work, and one, and one of the things was the ethics training that John Mancini had done for us in twenty nineteen, and that was something he stressed, is that, I mean, if, as long as we're keeping it open, do we, do we have to harmonize that, have the same, have same amount as the state law has?
If I recall correctly, and Bob helped me on this, I think we have to comply with, with the state limit.
Okay, okay, I thought the state limit was fifty, okay.
I believe I'm trying to check quickly, but I believe the state limit is seventy-five.
Oh, fine, and then.
That's why the board, the Ethics Board decided to change it, you don't have to comply. They're two different things, the state law applies to uh, Article eighteen, Article eighteen, Section eight hundred of the general municipal restriction of there, which have to do with contracts and interest in contracts. The ethics, the village can be more
stricter.
stricter or less strict, wherever the village, wherever the board trustee wants to be.
Then I withdraw my question.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
We'll keep this open.
All right, so I would also suggest, what?
We've been, we, we all have been, Susan Darren's like on the maintenance board. I've been waiting a long time to have this code revised, so that we, we work with it all the time, and often it comes up. Well, the old code says this, or it doesn't say this, and if you're going to wait, how long has it been since the, we've been sitting on waiting for you to act on this since it got enacted?
This, 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 the, the, yeah, how committee submitted its report in December of twenty twenty-one.
To the, to the, to the board?
Twenty-two.
To, to the board?
So to the board.
Twenty-one, twenty twenty-one.
It's been a long time since we got this code enacted.
This is twenty twenty-four.
Use it, the better.
Pretty dysfunctional board, though.
Better.
Yeah.
So if you're going to wait another, but can you just put a limit on?
Sure, absolutely.
Another thing is, there's one provision that we need to be working on right now that's relevant, which is the people who don't comply with disclosure forms, and, um, I think February fifteenth was the day that everybody was supposed to do it, there's at least a dozen, if not twenty, people who haven't done that yet, and there is no provision for enforcing or requiring people to do it right now in the old code. Am I right, Dan?
That's correct.
Okay, so the longer you wait, the less we're gonna be able to get people to do the disclosures that we need so that they can continue to work on their commitment.
This is, yeah, I, we're, we're late to this, I understand, well, the only two questions I had, and, uh, and look at that.
So can I?
Things are gonna come up, some people said I gotta read it more, it is complicated, but, um, don't wait too long, please, and at least give us permission to act on that one piece. If you can do, separate and say, okay, well, I, Bob's gonna say no. Okay, all right, but you got the point.
So there are a couple ways you can proceed at this point, you could hold a public hearing open. You could adopt the law as it is. Or you could, I, I, I got a sense that there's at least one change that the board wants to make, which is to address Mr. T. Kurt's request of age discrimination.
It's a valid, valid, uh, criticism, yeah.
What we could do is draft a new law for the next meeting that has that, who makes that one change, you can, you can, that makes that one change, then you can consider that at a follow-up public hearing. Or if you adopt it tonight or next week or two weeks from now, we could amend that section in a follow-up law.
So.
So it meant what section, I'm sorry.
The section of the age.
Okay, got it.
What we can't do, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we, what you can't do is adopt a piece of this right now, because if we change the substance, that's all in the public here.
And so even if we add the word age to it, we have, we have to renotice it?
Yeah, that's a substantive change.
Yes, so um, it, it looks like everything that we've discussed tonight would be additions versus changes.
Yeah.
And so even, we don't have, we, we haven't had enough conversation that would have to go back to work session, I'm just trying to, uh, uh, because I, I, you know, I'm mindful about how much time this has taken and how long it took the Board of Trustees to respond after we got the draft. And we did go through a great variety of changes, we've discussed this, and this, so Bob created a new draft about a month ago, like, I think over Christmas break, so.
The Ethics Board spent an enormous amount of time on this.
So it seems to me that it might be, um, if we, the process would be, except if we do anything other than the changing, adding age to this, we have to have a conversation in two weeks at the board meeting, get a new draft, approve it again, huh, if we all agree in two weeks, approve it in four weeks at, and schedule a public hearing, so we're delaying it by at least two months. So six weeks at the most, right, I mean, I mean, we.
You do, do it from now, you tell us what you want drafted.
Right.
Well, things, you're right, two weeks then to put it back before you then two weeks to schedule a public hearing.
Right, right, so it's six weeks and a. Right, right, so it's six weeks at a minimum. So it seems, I'd be, I'd be, I would be happy to consider adopting this version of the law and incorporating that, we got one email today with, with some suggestions and discussing it with the, with the board and in, and maybe making some modifications in the next six weeks, but not stop all the progress that's been made, because some of these changes were recommended two years ago. Okay.
Mike? No, that was my question, could we adopt now and look into the changes and just make an amendment, or does it, does it all have to happen at, like, at this moment where we have to revise, get a draft, do then delay it two more months?
You can adopt it tonight and then amend it later.
So Bob? I'm sorry. Can we leave this open until the next meeting, which is March eleventh? They'll make whatever change, the age change and anything else that we had to do, right? You can change it between now and then, or no?
Yes, but what I, what you can't do is change this law without closing this hearing and opening a new hearing on the new law.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, we should just adopt this now and then add the amendments, and then just go to the process again of changing small pieces that you've questioned about. I think that's just the best, this was, this was sitting for, before I was on the board.
Okay, with that. Uh, and one, one other point I'd make to something Stuart raised earlier is that there, it, this isn't in backup now, but there's been this, um, there's like the, the racy matrix. There is kind of a list that you have of what the changes are, and that's been on backup previously. Is that still current?
I have looked at the Racy Matrix recently, so I, I, I have to reserve comment on it. It's not part of the code.
No, but it was, it was just basically, it was, it was a guide, and it's been in backup, and it was, it was like a a table of changes, so like comparing the changes in the old code to the new code. So it was a way of being able to figure out what the changes were, and it's been on backup several times as we've discussed this law.
Okay.
Okay, you believe me?
Um. Is it possible you could post a public hearing, vote this down, draft, add the additions to the law, and renotice it for the next meeting? It only has to be on the desks of the trustees for ten days, right?
I used a word that you said, but I, you, you have to have the law before you schedule a public hearing.
Okay, I, I'm just spitballing here, but you couldn't just add age tonight if you wanted?
You could, that, that's what I was about to say, you could, if, if all we're gonna do, all you wanna do is add the word age. You can add that tonight.
Yes, and.
Schedule a public hearing for two weeks from there. Uh, so we would read discriminate upon the involved areas, integration, director indirectly, based upon age comma creed comma color, assess. You can do that tonight. Let's get a little public hearing on that. What we do is prepare the new law in the morning so that Sally can get it, get everything in the paper and have it in the minutes and so forth.
So that looks like, like.
But you would have to vote this law down tonight, right?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you said that earlier.
So, here we go.
Okay.
If, all right, so a public hearing, then, I would close the hearing, but you have to vote it down.
And, and, and any additional changes you want to discuss, we could just handle separately, right?
Yeah.
Handle that for that.
Okay, great, good.
If you're gonna make those changes, shouldn't we just make the changes to reflect all of the categories?
I think those are a little bit more complicated, and that's why it's like gender.
Well, not that one.
No, no, that, that, I mean, the, the age thing is simple, the, the other stuff is gonna be more complicated.
Possibly.
Possibly, if we, if we even.
It's a question of what we can do officially, sitting here going back and forth, adding one word, ages are a problem, you can add other words too to this section if you want.
Yeah, I'm just saying, reflect either New York State Code or, you know, federal for what the categories are. Instead of just adding one category, just put them, just put them all.
That, that, that I couldn't do sitting here tonight, so I have the law in front of me. So I can do that for next law, for next time, and along for next time. I mean, I think we actually did that last year when the village updated the, uh, I think the housing discrimination law.
I mean, look, look, this question became up my, my head just, just today when I was rereading it, and I said, wait a minute, so um, uh, I, I, I wanna think about it some more.
Okay, so we're leaving this open?
Well, leaving it open doesn't get us anywhere, because we're we're not adopting this law, because even at a minimum, if we're gonna change the word age, min, or include, add the word age, min, leaving it open doesn't get us anywhere. But, but, and we could have more conversations about what our changes are, but typically, I mean, we could just, instead of talking about it at the work session in two weeks, we could talk about changes in another public hearing, but we typically don't do that, we typically work out the language in work session for what changes we make, or we could wait, I mean, go wait two weeks and see if the public makes more comment. It's just to, to Susan's point, how, how long do we want to wait before we adopt this? Do we want to adopt this, add age, or just put kick the can down the road and make all the modifications at once? I think that's the question before we decide whether we're gonna close or not.
I think, I think we can, we, we can add age, we, we can close this, add age, pass that law, and the, and the other, um, the, 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 the things we're talking about is about putting a firewall between the, of politics and government, uh, on these, uh, on the operational end, uh, we can have that discussion and see how that might take, take effect or not.
So if you want to just add age, you could close the public hearing, talk about any age, and vote to schedule a public hearing at the next meeting on the new version of the law.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, then you go as amended later.
Yeah, okay, great, good, good, that's fine.
Nora, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I mean, to make it up.
Make a motion to do what Bob just suggested.
I should close the public hearing first.
I motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Now I make a motion to add the word age.
Schedule a public hearing on the law to conform with the word age added where I suggested.
For March eleventh.
March eleventh. And then, um, should, remember, you should put the, the other, I'll, I'll figure out how to, how to phrase the other, other item for the work session.
There were other recommendations made.
Okay, good, good, we could talk about it.
Comments, including the Ethics Board, because I'm sure you want to rewrite this again.
Anybody listening who wants to weigh in on this about, about what we're talking about, if, if you followed it, let us know, please.
We have to be close this, correct?
So we can. Thanks, Susan, thanks, sorry. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a, a public, a public hearing on P L L E twenty twenty-four fees and escrows for the elevating, the raising of dwellings to satisfy section one eighty-six point five of the Village Code.
It's raising with an S, not a Z.
So basically, this is um waiving the fees for individuals who are proposing to elevate their houses, but not waiving the permit requirement. So we make sure that everything is all done according to code, but we're not charging fees for people we want, because we want to encourage them to elevate their houses. I make a motion to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe there was one question that I came up with this. We are, and, and I don't even know where, where, where this actually started. There, the building department indicated that they get a fee of a thousand seventy-five just to look at any kind of an application that comes in, uh, regarding, you know, different permits. And you would have to make sure that absolutely every fee, whether it's a permit fee, or, you know, a, a looksee fee, uh, is, um, make sure that all fees are waived, just to dot all your i's and t's. I'm not sure, I know you're looking confused, Dan.
No, no, I, I think this.
I think that was, that was brought up by the building department, the pushback, I don't know if some of you heard about it. You just have to make sure that it's every fee is waived.
The proposal, there were, when we talked about this law, I think it was about a month ago, there was an, a recommended addition by the building inspector, which we did not take to have a one thousand dollar plan review fee for part of this. We did not include that in the law.
Okay, good.
Are there any other comments?
Okay, I make a motion, we adopt this law. I make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion, we adopt the law?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the next, um, public hearing is P L L F two oh two four to, um, adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget that exceeds the cap, tax cap, the established tax cap. So just that, this, we're, in, in this, this is my seventh year doing this, we have never actually gone over the tax cap, but you have to, in order to go over the tax cap, you have to have a local law, and so you have to have that hearing opened in the event that when you do your final budget, you are able to adopt a law that allows you to go with the tax cap.
Just to be clear, this law doesn't adopt a budget that exceeds the tax cap. It allows you, it authorizes you to adopt the budget that exceeds the tax cap.
So we should change, we should.
Brought away the car jack, just in case you have a flat tire. Okay.
So.
It's also the language, right?
So we, so here's what the, here's what the local law says. Adoption of proposed local law F of twenty twenty-four authorizing the board of trustees of the village of Amerenik to adopt a budget for twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five that exceeds the tax cap established by general municipal law. So that, that just allows us to do it if we want to, it doesn't require us to do it. So it's our cover page that's not clear, but the law is right. I, I, I make a motion to open the public hearing. No, we don't have to, yeah, it's open, we're just gonna carry it, yeah.
Nobody helped it, yeah.
So second to Nora's motion, open.
All is in favor.
Aye.
Do we need to make a motion to adjourn it, or we just leave it open?
Absolutely, yeah, that's what I don't remember.
I just have an associated comment, um, I believe the villages have the same auditor for I hope this board will require that we issue an RFP this year for an order. The controller recommends that, it's unrightfully. We've seen, you know, the problems that have occurred in the library with, you know, too much of a relationship between the auditor and the board, so that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can respond to that, the, uh, this was the last year of our current engagement, and we are preparing our.
And we did, it's like, four years ago, we did go through the exercise, we picked them again, but we did explore this.
We did RFP four years ago, or three years ago, I can't recall, but we're, we're at the end of the current engagement. There's the short version.
Thank you, thank you.
Stay open or?
It has to stay open, right?
You can open, so then you're able to adopt the law in advance of the budget, or you can just adopt the law, the drawdown is a double requirement.
We, we've just left it open, we never actually adopted the law.
I remember we flipped it open last year.
But if you leave it open, it's gonna be on the agenda, you have to, you know, leave it open to the next meeting each time.
Why wouldn't we just adopt it? Because I think people may be upset if we adopt a law to go over the tax cap, and I think explaining that this is just in the eventuality that we have to do it, it's, it's just a safety measure. I mean, we've just, we've never adopted it, we've just carried it over. So we're just gonna bring it up every meeting until the budget's done.
Yeah. We will adjourn to March eleven.
So, well, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this to March eleven.
Second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, um, we have the, um, of Village of Amerenik abstract of audited vouchers, and it's twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, we have two audits tonight. That's the manual. Does anybody have any questions? This is the manual, right?
Nope.
You're gonna wait, okay. Anybody want to make a motion to adopt the audited manual vouchers?
I move to make, um, to adopt the, uh, the manual.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we have the, um, abstract of the audited vouchers, and it is one million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eight cents. Any questions?
Live view technologies, ten thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Just to raise the point I raised before, or you can pay this in perpetuity.
I'll make sure that it's on the agenda the next time, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, right under that is laying appraisals. Was this for the Hunter lot?
It was not.
Stuart, what, Stuart, what page you on?
Page eight.
No, no.
Maybe six, I'm sorry.
Six, great, thank you, yeah. And you asked this, is it a hundred tears, right?
I asked that, and then I asked.
No.
Uh, it was, we have two appraisals, one for us to get, understand the value of the old firehouse, and then for, uh, the value of the condominium units at one twenty-three American.
And you mean the firehouse on the garden?
Yeah.
condominium work?
The, 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 yeah.
Okay, um, page seven. The attorney's bills are a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars this month. That adds up. I hope at some point this board will, when you have time, not rushing you, will look into the idea of hiring a full-time village attorney. Page thirteen. Private insurance services. So is this a payment for insurance, an insurance claim that wasn't covered by insurance? Twenty-two thousand dollars for a car on this, um, church.
Page thirteen.
Halfway down on page.
About in the middle.
I
Okay, got it.
I recall reviewing this last Friday morning. I can't recall the specifics.
But just conceptually, I mean.
It, it, again, it might have been, um, you know, above and beyond what are deductible cars, I, I just, I, I, I'd have to re, re-review the bill, I just can't recall off the top of my head.
I would just say the board should, you know, if you don't know what's a payment board, you should put it aside, you know. Fed tree. Again, we're at the point that we pay them by the size of a tree. Um, a half inch difference, maybe five hundred dollars on a tree. Um, as far as I know, we don't measure the trees, we let them measure the trees. I'm not sure how that's protecting the taxpayer first. Page thirty-four. There's eighteen thousand dollars for repairs to the silver, silven lane pump station. All done as emergency work. Don't we have two pumps? Don't we have two pumps in there?
The entire, the electrical system failed. Everything broke.
So we didn't even have to replace the pumps?
No, we had to replace the pumps. The electrical system failed, the pumps failed. It was, it was. No, it was, the pumps were destroyed, from what I understand.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to remove tribal insurance until we have a better explanation?
Please.
KBS on this computer. Yep.
That's page thirteen.
You remember, you remember going over it, all right? Okay.
And the number.
Fact that Dan doesn't have total recall.
Are you looking for the vendor code or the P O number?
It's the voucher number.
It's five. Five, six, one, seven, one, two, four.
That's the one? Yeah, they're still.
That's the $22,000. Yes, that's it, and then the.
The voucher number?
That is the voucher number. Five, five, six, one, seven, one, two, four. Okay, how about?
And there's nothing under tridents since 2022. Yeah, nothing comes up under that.
I'm gonna see if I can.
Well. Looking it up.
That's. Well, I'm gonna see if I can access the remote desktop.
Can you look by purchaser?
Hey? Can I get into the remote desktop?
Okay, then.
There's nothing, there's nothing in the slide.
Are you in, what mode are you in, in KBS? Oh, so you weren't in line? Okay, that explains it. Terms of our.
Is there any reason we can't just remove those for now and put them on the next run?
I think it's because then they would be paid for a month.
Damage.
Well, two weeks.
I think we'll go back to a month because are we still on that bits and month? We went back to two weeks. Little property damage for a salon. Salon. Salon Boushee? Was claiming?
It was a personal injury claim from a car accident. With a village-owned vehicle that happened August of last year.
And insurance doesn't cover it, or is it a settlement?
I believe that was the settlement.
Question answer.
Thank you, Mary. So when something like that happens, it just appears as an insurance claim, not?
Because we pay the insurance company, the insurance company pays the.
The insurance company settles it, and we just have to pay it.
Yeah.
We don't have to approve it, we just pay it.
So, any other questions? Is there a motion to pass? The audit?
I made them.
All those in favor? There is no old business, moving on to new business. There's a resolution scheduling a department budget work session and budget public hearings.
These are the multitude of meetings the board will be having, beginning at the end of March into April, to review the attended budget. So you're comfortable and decided to agree to any changes that you may wanna make to the final budget, which the board will have, is scheduled to adopt at the second meeting in April, but are required to adopt a budget by the midnight on May 1st.
Do we wanna read the dates? March, we, it's Monday, March 24th, Monday, March, Wednesday, sorry, Thursday, March 21st, Wednesday, March 27th.
Wait, wait, twenty-first, twenty-seventh?
Yes, it's in there. Monday, April 1st, Wednesday, April 3rd, Tuesday, April 9th, Monday, April 15th, and then the budget adoption is ended on the 24th at our board meeting. And these meetings are from 5:30 to 7:00 P M. There's one conflict with the flood, the flood mitigation committee is having a joint meeting with two other communities the same night as one of these meetings. April 9th, and so they're starting at seven, and we typically finish by seven, so it's probably not a conflict, but.
Or we can see if things start at seven thirty.
We can make it a point to finish by seven at night, I guess, right?
Or they could start at seven thirty.
Yeah, and we do have that April 15th as kind of like a miscellaneous, if we need it.
Yeah, that primary school meeting's gonna be interesting.
I believe I saw, is the preliminary budget going to be presented on March 20th, or posted on the website?
We usually, I'm not sure if it's be posted on the website by the close of business. We will have a public copy available in the clerk's office. It has to be filed by close of business on March 20th. We usually have it online that day, but we, at the very least, will have a copy available for public perusal.
It would be available within the next couple of days.
Oh, absolutely.
The one thing I would like to reiterate again, a strong warning with the, with the budget and some of the things that have been going around this really, this budget, the preliminary budget at least, has to come in clean. It can't have raises that were promised, it can't have stipends, it can't have new positions, it can't have, you know, unreasonable revenues that are never gonna occur. It can't shave expenses that with, without, without reason. That's why we have some of the problems that we have right now. And the problem is that if you put something in there and you have to claw it back, you will have 10 times the amount of problems if it never existed to begin with. You could always add, if all the numbers look fine and everything, you could always add. But to try to take something back, if you basically put it in writing and everything like that, is kind of an insult to the employees, and it puts you so, you as a board in a bad position. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question. It says at the bottom, April 24th, the budget adoption at board, at board meeting, and the 24th is a Wednesday. Okay. So.
So it'll be the 22nd.
So, yeah, it'll be the 22nd. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? I move to adopt as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next resolution is authorizing the implementation of AEDs at outdoor recreational facilities.
No, this is something that Jason brought to the PRC as well as the BOT. I think in our last meeting to discuss essentially adding AEDs in certain locations within Harbor Island Park. This is just us authorizing, you know, to start with six, I think, when he met with the PRC, he had like, I think, nine or eight, and he said, we should really focus on cutting that back and think of this as a pilot program where we can hopefully add to all the larger parks like Florence and Columbus Park. This, and he also mentioned that this is gonna probably become the standard in the state. We're gonna have to have these boxes like available, and AEDs available in all parks, because it's gonna, it's like, it's gonna be a law that essential, or I don't know if it's actually gonna be a law, but it's gonna be something where any league that plays at any of these parks are gonna have to have something nearby, well, an AED device nearby, or the planning facility is.
Yeah, the law that was passed this year and signed in, signed into law, was for all municipalities that have outdoor recreational facilities to develop an implementation plan for AEDs. And once we're required to develop an implement, implementation plan, the next step will be to implement the implementation plan. So we're trying to get out ahead and be a model for the communities.
Any questions? Comments? Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I see resolution authorizing additional funding for overage of quantities to contract 2023-01 from Mount Pleasant, Amerenik Avenue School and Drainage Improvements.
This was for the work we did last summer to construct sidewalks on Ralph, I think it was Ralph Avenue, and the drainage work we did on Gertrude and Ralph as well. We were slightly over on the estimate of certain big unit items. I think, you know, on a, you know, on a 1.8 million dollar contract exceeding by 52,000. So, you know, it turned out, yeah, not as, a little over, but not, not, not a horrible situation. So this is just the additional funding necessary to pay for all of the materials that were used as part of the project.
I just have one question. This isn't the first time they came back for it to us for extra funding.
Well, the.
You know, was right here, and the whole project went up to, I think, eighteen billion, and so, or one point.
Yeah, so there was a, there was a change order because field conditions necessitated a change in the scope of the project. So that was a change in, and it's, it's a distinction that some may say it's a distinction without a difference. But the first part was for a change in scope. This part was to, for certain big unit items, we exceeded the estimated quantities. So. We're just looking.
It just bothers me a little bit because we, we added the traffic, the traffic study to this. We had to do some sampling, and then, so the project itself, there was extra costs that we already adopted. And now we're going back one more time to make this more expensive.
Well, we needed to have a maintenance protection of traffic plan because Amerenik Avenue School is used during the summer. There's summer classes, and there are, it was the co-op, it was a camp program, and we needed to account for the traffic that was gonna be coming in and out of the school. Second.
This is where projects go from $5 million to $2 million. And, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of the increased cost was based on field conditions. You know, honestly, unfortunately, when you're doing a construction project, you know, if you, once you get into the ground, you're gonna discover things that you didn't know were there to begin with, and that's what happened here. And the, the second part about this, the sidewalk portion of the project is being partially funded with community development block grant funds. I think we had 250 or 275,000 dollars. And then, because this was also repairing damage related to Hurricane Ida, we're gonna be seeking reimbursement from FEMA to help cover the cost as well for the majority of the project.
And we talked about this last two weeks ago, and I had said that, you know, we have, we have sort of, we authorized it last week, but we don't have a lot of choice because the money's been spent. And I think we really need to be in a situation where when, when it's clear that there's gonna be an overage, we need to appropriate that funding then, not wait until it's been spent.
Yeah, we were waiting for the final bills, unfortunately.
But I think we have to sort of know that ahead of time. Because now we've incurred the expense, we can't not spend it, or can't not pay it. Any other questions?
No.
I move that we adopt this. Our move to approve. On favor? And our next item is we're scheduling a public hearing. You're adopting, we are, resolution to schedule a public hearing on P L L G two oh two four, adopting schedules for impervious surface coverage. Dan, can you explain this?
I know Mary's online as well, but this was when the board last year adopted a local law that strengthened our storm order regulations in the village. The, there were changes that need to be made to the schedule. That was not included, so this is kinda fixing that, that oversight from last year.
So if there's an application in the pipeline, would this apply, or would it, does it apply to anything in the pipeline starting tomorrow?
If an application is already in front of a board and already received a board approval, this would not apply, so.
But if it's in front of a board and hasn't received, I'm just, I mean, I'm not even, I'm not referring any specific applications, but when does this kick in, I guess, is that's my question?
It'll kick in, well, it'll kick in once it's filed with the Department of State. However, if an applicant has already gotten approval by any of the boards, then it's going to be exempt from this. So if someone is already invested in the process, they don't go have to retroactively go back and look at the impervious surfaces on their application. It's probably, I mean, that's not gonna happen to too many applications, but it will happen to some, and us will make sure there's no confusion with this application.
Thank you. Any other questions? So a motion to adopt this local law, a motion to schedule the public hearing.
Second.
For two weeks from today.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five E. Resolution authorizing execution of contract with Southeast Consortium for 2024.
I discussed, we discussed this during a work session, but municipal governments are required to provide recreational and therapeutic services for individuals with disabilities. The cost of doing so per municipality would be exorbitant, so the village, along with many other communities in our local area, including Portchester, Ry Brook, City of Ry, Town of Amerenik, Larchmont, Scarsdale, and I think maybe as far as Tuckahoe and Eastchester, worked together and created what's known as the Southeast Consortium for Special Services, and they provide those services for us. Our annual fee to participate in the program. Our annual fee to participate in the program is six thousand seven hundred thirty nine dollars and ninety five cents. And like I mentioned, we were doing this ourselves, we would spend way more money than sixty seven hundred dollars. And actually, the, the expenses offset by revenue because Southeast lease rents all space from us pavilions. So this is a tremendous program that we've been a member for, I think, forty plus years. And we're looking for year forty two, or actually, we've been for forty two, this is year forty three.
I'm sorry. I was breathing. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5F, resolution authorizing the continuation of the 2024 motel license for Vincent and Sons.
Mayor, they did pass their fire inspection, so they have everything they need to extend their license to December 31st, 2024.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
5G, resolution accepting resignation of tree committee member and appointment of replacement.
So move.
We have, well, do we have to name?
Yeah.
I mean, do you want to say, you want to say who resigned?
Yes.
Yes, a member of the tree committee resigned, Krishna Finkenberg. And so we had an opening and Gail Kohler, who was co-chair of this committee. She was off for a year, which you need to be before being reappointed, and she applied again. And so she is your advocate.
Good.
Thank you.
I move, oh, I move that we adopt, that we appoint Gail Kohler as a member of the tree committee for a term. I guess it's ending December, I don't know what the. Twenty five, I'm sorry, oh, I'm looking, okay, twenty, at December 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5H, resolution approving budget amendment to sanitary sewer repairs.
This is the aforementioned Silver Lake pump station. It experienced a total failure and we needed to get it back in operation to ensure the continued operation of our public health infrastructure.
Any question? In motion?
I move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5I, resolution authorizing execution of contract for village manager search. So we do not yet have the contract, but we have chosen a search firm. We should have the contract this week, so this probably needs to move to March 11.
And the mayor got a better deal for us, right?
We, um, we will have an eighteen month guarantee, meaning if the person chosen through the search firm does not make it to eighteen months regardless of whether they leave of their own accord, there is no additional fee for them to find a replacement.
We get a free search.
You get a free search.
There you go. Nice job.
So we can't.
We are.
Yeah, because we're not voting on that, right?
No, we can't, we don't have the contract yet, so we'll have to do it on March 11.
Do we need to add an item to the board?
Yeah.
Oh, honey, you, okay. Um, okay, comments to the board?
Yeah, Glenn Tippett. How far along are we with the sports time contract? I believe it's up either in August to September. Or if time is of the essence at this point, because sports time has to advertise what they're going to do or they're done. It's a large source of income for this village and should be addressed. On affordable housing. Who suggested Hunter Lot? I did. And I'll tell you, my suggestion isn't what's proposed. Everybody goes, I don't want, I don't want, you know, that there's compromises in everything. Personally, I wanted Hunter Lot to be built. I wanted an extra story on the parking, because parking's always been a problem. And then I was looking at maybe forty units on top, half of the senior units. If that's not available, maybe what you do is you put two, you build up the parking lot bigger. You put two office floors on there where you can move the building department, because they're completely cramped in this building, and maybe you put thirty units on top. And if it's possible, maybe what you could do is you could have a caveat that gives priority to people who are affected by Storm Ida, which would be a specific item, but it wouldn't be race, it wouldn't be creed, it wouldn't be color. Simply anybody who was affected by Ida gets to go to the front of the line. And instead of five million people, maybe you have fifty thousand people that were affected. But there's not, nothing wrong with a smaller project, plenty of parking, the thing, and we have to do this with everything. We have to start thinking what we need tomorrow. We still need a village hall, but we need a village hall for what we, for, for, for future use. With the town of America with their village walls, they put an extra couple of floors on it. With the fire department came, you're looking for a million dollar building. They don't need a million dollar building, they need a three million dollar building because the rec department eat space, the park department eat space. Everybody, we also have records that we pay to be down at Hollister Avenue. Forward, forward thinking, if you build a new village hall in the back, maybe you take this building, you take part of it and that's your, your emergency center. In case there is a, an emergency in Florida. And at the same time, work with the library and work with the Emmeline Theater, that they could use it as an art space. That they could use it, you know, as a a, a, a space for rehearsal. And incorporate maybe with the historic society and turn it into, you know, a picturesque small museum of what the village looks like. You know, it's forward thinking. The flood mitigate, the flood mitigation, everything should be on the table. As I said, starting on Revere Road, opening up that whole other side, Point Avenue, everything should be on the table. At one section at a time, if you can solve Revere Road, maybe you can survive the heights. Make it smaller and smaller. Every time you can fix one part of the problem, that's, that gives you more opportunity to work on what the rest of the problem is. Lastly, we have the sanitation, sewer lines being worked on right now. We are under a decree. It already cost us five hundred thousand dollars because we, we missed the first deadline that I warned you about for four years. Coming up here, it wasn't like it was a mystery, don't worry about it, don't worry about it. That cost us five hundred thousand dollars. Where are we right now? Because that has to be done, I believe, by September, October with the new decree, which includes paperwork. Are we on top of it? Where's the contractor with that now? And one last one, this is, as part of the fine, I saw that we were one hundred fifty thousand went to save by the sound, the other three hundred eighty five was going to county for either environmental or beautification. Maybe we give George Latimer a call and say, hey, that other three hundred fifty thousand that were given to Westchester, maybe that project can be here in American, that way we can claw back some money. Thank you.
I just want to high up this thing with the ethics word and the traffic. I was at the ethics board meeting in January and February. And I heard a conversation that Lou made some kind of communication to the ethics board about traffic commission and some issue dealing with Prospect Avenue. So you weren't a trustee back then, you weren't at the traffic commission. I was there. And you kind of passed through where the ethics board meeting was. I believe you saw me and you just continued, you didn't want to have any confrontation with me, that's what I'm assuming. I wrote minutes of January 2022. This meeting occurred in July of 2021. If anyone wants to know what happened, we leave traffic minutes of January 2022. Lou, if you have some issue with the traffic commission, let's, let's deal with it. I'm giving you an open invitation. I will be at the traffic, at the ethics board in March. I'm giving you an open invitation to come in. If you have some ethics or complaint about the traffic commission for me personally, come talk to the ethics board. I'll be there and I'll answer anything that you have to say. If you have an open invitation, please come. Look forward to it.
Robert put a long side on, on my lawn, keep it a long side.
Are there any other comments?
Just a couple of final comments I have. I'm not going to second guess the board about getting your consultant, but at least I hope you both read both proposals at least twice. And let me say, the people who are here, they know those proposals backwards and forwards. I mean, they know them word for word. Somebody said earlier that we have, it's not really going to develop it, but they're going to get a development fee of about five or six million dollars. What you, what we did here is that the county is buying the property. And it is questionable whether the county has to follow any Village of American moving regulations. I believe there's a legitimate issue in town script if they have a problem with that. You have to be really careful about what you're doing here. The ad hoc committee that you are asking for, you're asking for developers, housing people, I hope you pick people with common sense. Just people who live here, just people who, who want the best for the village. And the last thing is, when you put affordable housing in the same sentence, you're talking lottery. Stop with the special criteria, it's not going to happen. And I just wish the board would stop the charade and be honest with the people of American and say, it is a lottery. Just going to have to put your name in the hat.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback, it's where I paid a rally road on where we said, um, many of us have been reading those are the proposals over and over again. Hundred and thirty pages. And I'd like to know honestly, all of you that sit here, have you really read those proposals in and out?
I have.
Because I've asked you, I think I sent an email, if you would help. Maybe, maybe we need a list of like pros and cons, because I can't find any thing or any way that the village benefits, for the residents of this village will benefit from this project. So I know everybody's talking about the fact that the county takes over. That's a little bit scary to me, what does that mean exactly? We can have like a bar stool, I'm like, like I'm a recline man. So the county is going to be the person that actually owns the land, okay? Um, and then I think, what are we getting, like over four hundred thousand for the land after everything is said and done? As Dan said earlier, when you start building, you never know what happens, right? Any building project can turn more money. So let's see, what will we walk away with? We're starting at four fifty and then this might happen or that might happen, and they're going to walk away with no money. And from what I'm hearing, we're kind of tight in the money area. So we're spending money on consultants. We're spending my, we're spending so much time talking about these two proposals, but I've asked this before. Why are there only two proposals? Because they both stink and they do not benefit us in any way. Why would there only be two bids for this property, for this deal, such a large deal? Such an important piece of our village, we're just giving away. The one we're going to pay, we're going to get a dollar for, and the other one get four hundred thousand for. Like, why are there, throw them both in the garbage and start again and do it right. Neither proposal is for us. I don't mind being corrected. Please, can you please give us a pros and cons? I'll, I can help you with the cons, I think we all can. And can you be specific about page numbers? On page ten, it says the village will get this. Please, how does this project benefit us? Please, we have to stop. Where's the flood mitigation? That's all over the comprehensive plan, but yet every time you turn on that TV early tonight, it's all about affordable housing. When are we going to meet? Where is the flood mitigation? Where are the residents first? We elected you. You swore to do the best for us, but yet we're focused on a project that has no pros for our village. But again, I have no problem being corrected. Anybody who's watching this, I love my neighbor who said she supports affordable housing on the tier lot, but she hasn't read the proposals. Read the proposals. They are on now on the village website, I've been putting them on next door. There are about thirty five hundred people, I think, voted in the last election. About fifteen hundred people have already said no and signed the, the, we don't want this. And then the other people in town have no clue what's going on. My neighbor, I love them, he's like seventy five. He told his wife, Victoria's against hunting, because they don't even know it's called the Hunter Lot. So my sign says no to the Hunter Lot, but people don't even know it's called that. People have no, nobody's read the proposal. They think, of course we want, of course we want affordable housing. But it doesn't belong there and we definitely don't need a hundred and seventy seven or seventy seven in that spot. We can do so much better. Stop pushing it, stop rushing and shoving it down our throats. We are not being heard and flood mitigation first. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments to the board? No? Okay, Sally, moving on to her report from the first agenda. Or I'll. Which one will we add?
I am.
I'll move to add item J to the planning board.
Yes.
Add an item, which is J, is adding an item.
We should have done that before.
Okay. No, okay, and yeah, we should have, and then B, then item K, which is the item that we're adding, appointing a member to the planning board.
So a second to Jay getting an item?
Oh, a second.
All favor.
Aye.
And I move to add item K to the planning board. Adding item, okay.
To, okay.
That's the item, I'm just, somebody has to do it.
Someone motioning or you motioned, so.
Well, I'm so confused, did you make the?
I made the motion to add an item to the agenda. And that's what the item is, right?
Did you second?
I'll second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody can, I'm, somebody can make them fill out the motion.
Make a motion, we point Mary Schiffer to the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that the railroad permit for both the resident and non-resident for a fire on February 29th? There will be a two week grace period, there's always a two week grace period. So if you can't come in by Thursday, please come in September tenth. You can buy the best court treasurer's office Monday through Friday, that's fine. You can purchase them online. If anyone has any questions, they can call the court treasurer's office, the number's on the website.
Okay, and we already handed the resident.
Resignation of, which we talked about before, of a member of the treatment.
Thank you. Bob, report from the village manager.
Local laws were filed with Secretary of State and it became effective on February 16th. Revision, and the other would be plumbing certificate law.
Thank you. Number nine, minutes for the commissions, boards and committees. The minutes for the board trustees' work session and regular session of January eighth, 2024. And that is it. Do you need a motion?
I move to, go ahead. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.